Yeah, Miller. Alrighty, we are live on Tuesday, December the ninth, twenty twenty-five at six o'clock P M. This portion of the meeting will be for a public hearing regarding additional appropriations. If anybody here in the audience is to speak on or against any publicized additional appropriation that we will take up tonight, this would be your time to do that. Is there anybody who wants to speak on or against an additional appropriation? Going once, going twice. I entertain a motion to adjourn the public.
I make that motion.
Motion by Miller, second by Collins, all in favor of adjournment of that portion of the meeting.
Mr. Jennifer, we signed on the wrong lines. Does that make any difference? It wasn't me.
Just, just as long as it's on the form of a request.
No, that's alright. You don't, you don't go why.
Alright, so then we'll start with the regular meeting. So again, it's Tuesday, December the ninth, six oh one P M. If you would stand with me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have your hands? Your hands like father, please be with this council as we make decisions for the county. Please let people that have lost loved ones recently, please be with them and counsel them and guide and direct them. And please be with the people this see, this holiday season, Lord, remember, let them remember that your son is the reason for the season. Thank you for everything you do for us, Lord, in Jesus Christ's name and prayer. Amen.
Thank you, John. Alright, next up is public comments on anything else, or what did you mean to me?
I apologize if I didn't speak up.
No, you're fine.
I'm just asking for a meeting.
You're fine.
About moving some money over in the prosecutor's fund.
Yes, the transfers, I think we have those, I think. If not, we'll do them. Um, and I, I will apologize in advance that I've been dealing with some personal matters of a sickness of a loved one this week, and my mind just wasn't with my normal getting an agenda. So the prosecutor did ask, and if the year can we have time to print one really quick, whatever we need. And then in the meantime, I'll get, uh, my next troops of missing them on there and let them talk, and then we'll move on. Cause I think, um, how you say that?
Fairge.
Fairge's wanting to talk also.
Okay, just you need.
You have that paper, Scott. You want to just give one of them, they'll work on the transfer. I'm sorry, but we'll work through it.
We tell you it's between us and whatever.
You wanna go?
Yeah, sure.
Whatever you want to do. I'm laid back in there.
The county central director here for extension, and I just wanted to come to introduce our new four H educator. This is Hannah Kirkoff. She started, uh, late September, um, so we're now getting around to coming introducing her, but I'll let her talk to you guys for a second. Yeah, um, so like she said, I'm Hannah. Um, I'll be changing my last name at the end of January, so you might also see Hannah Pollard, um, coming up, same person. Um, I was tenured four H member in Jackson County where I still live with my family. Um, I graduated from Purdue at the end of May with a degree in agricultural communication. Um, and while I was at Purdue, I worked for the Indiana State Forage Office as an intern, just doing all kinds of random stuff. Um, super passionate about the program, and I'm super happy to be back in Southern Indiana, so.
Welcome. Yeah, welcome. Thank you, and congratulations on your upcoming name change.
She didn't say she was.
I didn't say it either. I took congratulations on your name change.
Maybe she was getting.
I am not here to make assumptions, but whatever it is, um, in anything you need with the council, the way we work is usually runs through whoever's sitting in the president's seat at the time. We do the agendas, we help with, um, transfers, any money transfers within budgets is done by this board on a vote. Uh, any additional appropriations, anything like that you would need, we would handle it for you as well. So anything we can do for you in the future, feel free to let us know. Welcome. We're glad to see you around. Thank you for being here, introducing here. I appreciate it. Before I leave you, anything else we can do for you? Nope. Alright, well, welcome. Alrighty.
Yeah.
Did you say Boilerup? It wasn't the other night. I watched that game.
It's really hard when you're an I U grad and your daughter goes to Purdue.
Uh, you guys, if you wanna talk while we're doing some transfers, the floor is yours.
Would you like, would you like for us to go at the end if you wanna go first?
You don't wanna sit through all this. Yes.
Are you at the county?
I was.
Okay, I, I thought I recognized you.
He said he just wanted another folder. Thank you, sir.
So, um, Ricky Anderson with Fairge. Um, I've also got, uh, Tim Zanghi, um, uh, my development engineers and Stephen King, also my development engineer, so.
Cool name, by the way.
I'll sit down as well. So, um, so we've been working with the commissioners for the past, uh, probably six months on an energy conservation project. Uh, the way this thing works, so, uh, I'll get into the particulars on the paperwork here in a second, but just a real quick, uh, utility, uh, one oh one, I don't know if you guys know much about the utility situation in Indiana. We're a regulated utility state. All the states around us, Ohio, um, Michigan, Illinois are deregulated, which means you have choices of who to buy power from. Unfortunately, in Indiana, you don't. So you're stuck with geographically who you're stuck with, and that's not gonna change anytime in the near future. Indiana's gonna be probably one of the last states to deregulate. Um, the utility lobbies in the state are extremely strong, so. Good news, bad news, okay? Um, so, um, uh, and the, I don't know if the, do you have a same attorney that the?
Uh, no, this is our council attorney.
Okay, council. So, um, and the other council for the commissioners, uh, sat in our meeting, obviously, as well, so.
Yeah, Zach, two weeks and then.
Okay. So there's guaranteed savings legislation stated in the, uh, the first handout that I gave you on the left-hand side of your packet. So there's guaranteed savings legislation, I C dash thirty-six dash one dash twelve point five. Um, allows you guys to go out and procure these energy conservation projects, be in R F P or R F P. Uh, what we do is we come in and we look at, uh, anything that's, uh, utilizing utilities in your buildings, lighting, H V A C, uh, building envelope, windows, doors, insulation, um, and I'll get into the particulars on your situation here in a second, but we're looking at anything that we can help you offset the utility bill. We're never gonna be able to totally get off the utility, so we're trying to help you be a little bit more energy independent and fix up your building. So you have to kind of look at this thing as energy and operational savings on one hand, uh, infrastructure improvement on the other. I'll get into the, the infrastructure improvement here in a second. Uh, but the, the, what we're looking at is basically some of those things in your building. So, uh, uh, Tim and Steve and we went through and did a pretty, uh, pretty in-depth analysis of your buildings, and came up with some recommendations, and I'll get to you in a second. Um, the next handout on the left-hand side of that talks about the Inflation Reduction Act. Uh, that was passed back in twenty-two. Um, it allows you guys, even though you don't pay taxes, it allows you guys to get what they call an investment tax credit back on any investment that you make, either solar, geothermal, or batteries. It allows you to get back about thirty to forty percent from the federal government. Um, that's a really nice little carrot as far as, I'll get into the particulars here of your situation, but allows you guys to get back a one-time check from the federal government after your project's finished. So it's a pretty nice little carrot. I'll get into that here in a second. There's also a couple of case histories. Uh, Ripley County, actually, Craig Prince, uh, kind of found out about us. Um, he was, uh, for his nine-to-five job, he was over there calling on them for B F and S, and he, he met my, uh, uh, project manager out in the hallway, said, hey, uh, we could really utilize what you guys are doing for Ripley here at Scott County. So that's where we kind of started the whole process. Couple of case histories on there as well. So on the, on the right-hand side, um, is the particulars on your particular project. So, uh, what we try to do with these projects, the objective is collaborate with Scott County Development Energy Conservation, measures of decreased energy usage, produce sustainable energy, reduce utility costs, and provide substantial benefits to the buildings and community. So, so the project highlights some of the things that we found for your particular situation. Um, we were gonna put three, uh, solar P V arrays, uh, and I'll get into the community corrections, E M S and the health department, uh, courthouse. So, um, one of the big things here is a geothermal system. I don't know if you guys are familiar with geothermal, either in your house or at your business, but, uh, the, the geothermal system is basically acting as a, uh, if you think about your home H V A C system, you're condensing it outside, transfers heat and cooling, uh, out into the space. The geothermal, which is basically underground, basically does the same thing. So what we're talking about doing here is potentially putting a geothermal system in, totally getting rid of all this, uh, uh, stuff over here in the corner, and some of that older H V A C equipment, that all goes away, and the geothermal system basically goes underground and basically provides you with the same, same situation and, uh, a much more energy-saving situation, okay? Um, we're also talking about a courthouse control upgrade. I'll get, there's, I'll show you a picture here. You've got some old DOS, an old DOS system that you're using, so we're talking about totally upgrading that. Um, L E D lighting conversions in all your buildings. So very similar to what you got here, these flat panels, uh, are the best lights that you could possibly put in because it gets rid of all the bulbs and ballasts and lenses, and basically these things have a ten-year warranty. So we're basically trying to homogenize lighting in all your county buildings to kind of give you the same lights, if that makes sense. Um, uh, radiant heater down, I don't know if you guys are familiar with radiant heater or not, but down at the highway garage, we've got a couple of those old box heaters that are basically just blowing the air, uh, blowing hot air out in space. Radiant heat basically is a much more efficient heat and radiates down, uh, down into the space. So there's, there's savings involved, and it's also a much better heat. And also, um, any place you've got an L R twenty-two refrigerant, uh, you've got over at the E M A building, you've got, uh, a couple of condensers that have a L R twenty-two refrigerant. We're talking about replacing those as well, okay? So on the right-hand part of this thing, um, kind of shows where we potentially are putting some solar, uh, community corrections, E M S and the health department. Uh, as you'll see, we're offsetting, you know, uh, more than half of all three of those buildings, uh, with just the solar situation. Okay, so, um, if you go to, uh, the next page here, um, uh, after that, where basically this kind of gives you a little bit of idea of how solar would look on the roof, um, at each location. And then if you fielded off, uh, the cash flow, uh, so this eleven and a half, uh, eleven by seventeen, uh, at the bottom of this thing, this basically shows you how this guaranteed savings project works. Um, it is, it's a lot of information here, but really the things to, to really concentrate on. Um, so we'd be, we'd be, uh, we'd be guaranteeing, if you looked on, uh, uh, year one on here, it shows fifty-two thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars. So, uh, the, the state of Indiana, basically this guaranteed savings, we'll come up with a dollar amount that we're gonna save you, and if we don't save you, the dollar amount that we say we're gonna save you, we have to write you a check. So it's, it's guaranteed. The state makes us audit this every year, so I get your bills. We make sure that there's no hocus pocus, and it's real simple. This is what we save, and then this is what we didn't, so, pretty simple. But if you'll notice on here, uh, on that same line of year one, um, the I R A incentive made eight hundred and sixty-two thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. So that's what we're projecting to potentially get you back, um, from the federal government for this project. Majority of that would be a geothermal, but there'd be a little bit of, of it in solar. Okay, so this is a lot to digest, I understand, but, um, uh, I don't know if you guys have any quick questions?
Was Vernon your first place?
Uh, yeah, North Vernon on there, we did.
That's been several years ago, hasn't it?
About five, six years ago. I don't know if you guys have ever met Michael Oakes, uh, former mayor over there, but, uh, he basically, that, his old mayoral page on his, on the website was basically involving that project.
Well, I remember reading about it. I think we give it in the newspaper. It's kind of a, um, big deal.
Yeah, they, they've rebranded themselves as Scott County in Indiana, set, put it on the corner of their flag. Pretty cool, but, um, we're doing these projects all over the state, um, so we've got a, you know, we've got a really good reputation. Um, I always tell people, hey, if you have any questions, I can sit here all day and tell you how great we are, but, you know, call, call Michael Oakes. Mark Horstman is the, um, uh, commission, uh, president over at Ripley County. Um, also offer if you guys wanna go take a field trip, uh, you know, either on your own or I'll, I'll come pick you up in a van and take you. Um, it's real important, you know, I know this is typically the contracts with the commissioners, but you guys obviously are a big player in this thing too, and you guys appropriate the topic, so, um, next question.
I heard of this.
Next, next question, though, that I'll, uh, before you guys ask, you know, payment. So it's three different ways. It's cash, it's a bond, or it's a third party, we select. We've got communities doing all different kinds, so however, we don't get into that. You guys decide, you know, where the money's gonna come from, but we can, we can help provide some, uh, provide some, if you guys, you probably have a financial advisor. Are you Baker Tilly?
Yeah.
Okay, they're very familiar with, with these projects and.
No, the commissioner's actually haven't signed on with yet, I believe.
Oh, no, no, no. No, no, so.
Since I know you presented something.
Yeah, so, so typically, especially in counties, um, it's the extra layer that we, so you guys, you know, if you guys don't wanna do it, um, you guys have the right to say, hey, we ain't appropriating the money here. We're not, we're not getting involved with this thing, but, no, no, but the contract, the contract would be with the commissioners.
Yeah.
Pending approval of everybody, so.
For me, it's like you said, it's a lot to digest, and it's mind-boggling that we've worked on a project for six months in this county. It's the first time we've heard of it, but I think there's some benefit, obviously, uh, I think we would, something we'd have to definitely talk about and maybe work with Baker Tilly to see what options we have there, that type of funding to get to that amount of money to do that, but, um, seems like a, a large undertaking that has gone on thus far, so. Appreciate the amount of work and time you guys have put into that.
Well, we caught, we, we, we call it a cost of doing business. So, yeah, what I wanted to talk to you, I forgot to mention. So you'll also see a couple of diagrams in there. So we have an architectural part of our business. So I always tell people, you know, if you guys are, we're gonna go out and hire an architect engineer to do what we've done for you so far, it's probably fifty to a hundred thousand dollars, probably easily. So we don't charge for this thing. So up to this point, there's been no charge to the county for our, for our work and our assessment. Um, but part of this is I had a gal that works in our architectural group came through, uh, to look at city hall. So she took measurements of everything. Uh, again, it's, it's a lot to digest right now, but basically she, she made, she took some ideas on some areas that, you know, I know you need to, to, to upgrade over there, but there's some areas over there that is paint and carpet, really, and you really wouldn't have to get into too much knocking down a wall or doing that kind of stuff. But we've, we've done that as well, so I, I apologize for, I didn't mention that, but there's a, there's a couple of diagrams that we can obviously go over in more detail.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's, uh, definitely something to sit and look through, and I'm sure at some point we'll have some kind of questions to run up, up here.
Yeah, the, uh, I'll, I'll finish real quick. The, um, you know, like I was telling before, it's, it's energy and operational savings, and it's infrastructure, and, and, you know, uh, Ripley was a great example. They have an eighteen sixty-five courthouse that they've kind of hodgepodge, you know, they've done, this is nineteen seventy, and this is nineteen ninety. So we basically threw some crinets, not literally, but we kind of started over and, and gutted the whole building, basically started from scratch. You don't need that, but you have, you have some infrastructure needs here that, that would definitely benefit from a project like this, so.
I appreciate it. I'll, I'll dig into it, and if I come up with some questions, I'll send them your way. But thank you for all the work you've done thus far.
My card's in there, and, um, uh, if you have any questions, if you're through, call me anytime.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, we can do that. Thanks for doing that, Jim. I'm sorry, I forgot it. Transfers, um.
I was saying, we probably get here.
I think the next, what do you need?
I said, John, please plug in here at the meeting.
It's called Andrew. Anyway, next up, or we'll start the transfers, which there's a few of them, but nothing too crazy. And I think we can work through them fairly quickly. First one we'll do is for, uh, Amanda, it's on resolution twenty twenty-five dash four-three, and it's a resolution to transfer appropriations within major budget classifications. They're transferring twenty dollars from the lab services to library. Entertain a motion to, Collins with the motion. Let me hit second. Cheatham with the second, all in favor? Thank you. Next up is the prosecutor's office for twenty twenty-five dash four-four, and it again is a resolution to transfer appropriations within major budget classifications. Two hundred dollars from notices to other expenses. Entertain a motion.
I make that motion.
Motion by Miller, second by Collins. Any questions or comments? All in favor? I know. Next up is resolution twenty twenty-five dash four-five. It is a resolution to transfer appropriations between major budget classifications for the Scott County Prosecutor's Office. Three hundred dollars from lab services to office supplies. Entertain a motion. Motion by Miller, second by Cheatham, all in favor of that? Thank you. Sorry, I actually forgot that. Next up is resolution twenty twenty-five dash four-six, and it is a transfer within major classifications of three hundred fifty-six dollars and eleven cents from part-time admin to part-time deputy within the Scott County Recorder's Office. Entertain a motion to accept that one. Elizabeth made a motion, second by Collins, all in favor of that? Next up is resolution twenty twenty-five dash four-seven. It is a transfer of appropriations within major budget classifications for Scott County E M A and slash nine-one-one department, and they've requested a transfer of sixty-two dollars and eighteen cents from wearing apparel to equipment. And Will sent me a message that this is to cover that cushions bill that we've kicked around. Who's gonna pay it in, in twenty-six? It moves into Andrew's budget for him to pay out of and cover that, so the money's appropriated there. But this should wrap up. I think Andrew said this is the end of it for twenty-five. So for twenty-five, we just need to move sixty-two dollars and eighteen cents.
I make that motion.
Take it. Miller made a motion. James Ritchie with the second, all in favor? It's probably my fault, or, I don't know. I probably missed those. Twenty twenty-five dash four-eight. It is for the Scott County I T Department, request to transfer seven dollars from professional services to equipment to cover expense we were a little short on.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Collins, second by Elizabeth, all in favor of his seven-dollar transfer. That's keeping your budget pretty tight. This one is twenty twenty-five dash four-nine, and it is a resolution to transfer between major budget classifications for the Scott County Building Commissioner Department, seven hundred dollars from travel expense to wearing apparel, and four hundred dollars from dues and subscriptions to wearing apparel, which I think he talked to us at budget time about buying some winter clothing.
I make that motion.
Motion by Miller, second by Collins, all in favor of that move? Next up is resolution twenty twenty-five dash five-zero, and it is a resolution to transfer between major budget classifications for the Scott County Building Superintendent or Custodian Department, and is a request to move two hundred fifty dollars from office supplies to telephone line and five hundred from contractual cleaning to janitor supplies.
I make that motion.
Motion made by Miller to accept, as read, second by Collins, all in favor? That telephone line's another one that moved to Andrew. Next up is resolution twenty twenty-five dash five-one. It's a resolution to transfer appropriations within major budget classifications for the Scott County Sheriff's Department. Four thousand, six hundred dollars from repairs and maintenance to uniforms, and fifteen hundred dollars from postage to uniforms.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Miller, second by Collins, all in favor of that one? Next one up, resolution twenty twenty-five dash five-two. It's a resolution to transfer appropriations between major budget classifications for the Scott County Sheriff's Department. The amount of fifteen thousand dollars from fuel to uniforms and one thousand, four hundred fifty-three dollars and ninety-six cents from tires and parts to uniforms.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Miller, a second by John Elizabeth, all in favor of that one? Sheriff, that's for some vests.
We had that seven-dollar one. Oh, that was the I T.
I think that's all the five, that all the transfers.
You sure?
All the transfers we had. Not that we got some, which is possible. Um, next up was that, we had talked about the end of year, like a bonus for the peop, employees in the county that did not receive any kind of a pay raise, increase. I put that on the agenda to see if we wanted to talk about it again. The criteria for it, I think, um, you worked on the sum, it had to be, your salary didn't increase from twenty-four to twenty-five. You maintained the same in that, and you were an hourly employee that was full-time.
Well, you can set the criteria of, of what it is. What I talked to Wagner Shilly without was, um, you know, as long as it was the same criteria you used, we talked about people that did not get any kind of raise, uh, from point four to twenty-five. Uh, we talked about, um, whether, if we could and whether exclude elected officials, which the answer was yes to that, as long as we kept the criteria the same. So Shilly, do you guys determine what criteria? Um, I think you've identified some that were hourly employees who didn't get a raise in twenty twenty-four, twenty, uh, to twenty twenty-five. And again, won't we get one from twenty-five, twenty-six, right? But.
As it is right now, I mean, obviously twenty-six could change, but that's the way it stands now. There was a valid question that was pitched to me about, um, I don't wanna use the word fair because Zach's made me rethink the use of that word, but, um, in, should it be a set amount? Or should it be a, like, monthly amount that is dispersed based on the amount of months you were here? The reason that question came up was if one employee was hired in October, would they be privy to the same amount as someone who worked all year? And I think that's a, a fair question to pose to the board, if that's something we wanna do. If any of this is anything we wanna do.
I would say it needs to be prorated or something to where, cause if you got people working here yearly that don't get a raise, and then we turn around and get somebody that's only been here for two months, why?
I agree. And I think we had, somebody had thrown out the number for advertising purposes of like fifteen hundred dollars, which would be less than a dollar an hour based on a full-time employee. If you did that, you would be looking at, what, a hundred and twenty-five dollars a month, and then based on the number of months you worked. I think we added a few people to it, but it were around fifty people. I think we added a few people to it, but we're around fifty people in the courthouse.
Did not count the number. I have a list, but I don't.
In that ballpark, I think is what it is. But I put together some, going through some paperwork and worked with Jennifer, some, she had a few more, but I think we're around, the numbers around fifty that didn't get anything at all. They're hourly employees, they're not elected, and that was just an idea that was pitched.
Well, another issue we're gonna have too is you guys can, I think it was advertised for appropriation tonight. So if you guys decide what you want to do and what the criteria is, I think it would be best if we're gonna meet probably towards the end of the month because it is compensation and off compensation has to be approved by this board. It wouldn't go on a salary ordinance because it's not true salary. So I think that it would be best if we memorialize it in an ordinance or a resolution, how we came up with it, what the criteria was and what amounts are going to be paid and how. Just because looking at the statute that we are the only body that can fix the compensation. And a bonus would be compensation, so bonuses can't be paid out unless they come through us. And I want to make sure that we also have what our criteria is, pretty well thought out. I mean, you guys can still appropriate, hey, we're gonna, you know, appropriate fifty thousand dollars and we'll vote on the criteria on the thirtieth?
I think that's the next one you're gonna advertise, didn't have to clear.
I have not, but I wanted to set that tonight so we could advertise it.
But what's everybody's feelings on this? Do we want to do it? Do we not want to do it?
I'm gonna throw something out I've got, may not go anywhere, but I think it could be done. We've been looking like fifteen hundred dollars. Certain people will get different and all that. I had a long talk with Jennifer today and I'm not too sure, we won't have enough money left over this year to give everybody a one and a half percent raise over the whole board. I'd like to look at it, we can discuss it with her, but I think we've got some money still coming out, but I think there's gonna be enough left over. We could probably do it. One and a half percent's probably gonna be cheaper than fifteen hundred, I mean, per person. But if you do it on their wages, they come out better off. And they haven't been paid, what, in three years?
Twenty-four, twenty-five.
Yeah. We didn't budget one for twenty-six.
I don't think you got one of twenty-four either.
So are you talking about raising, changing the salary ordinance for twenty-six to give them a one and a half?
I would like, and I say one and a half, it might be two, but one and a half would cover everybody, I think.
Well, I think the issues with the numbers, as we have them today are, you got into the situation last year where you had a bunch of claims dumped at the last minute. So we don't, we won't know until she does your end report, what goes back. So maybe, I guess I want to make sure I understand what you're saying, Mr. Elizabeth. Are you wanting to do a, look at what we have after year-end reporting's done and do a one, a change to the salary ordinance to increase every budget one and a half percent? And not give a bonus for the people who did not get a raise in twenty-five?
Yes. Well, no, I'd give everybody one and a half.
For twenty-six?
For twenty-six.
I think what Jared's talking about is bonuses for those who did not get any kind of increase in twenty-five.
Just me.
When we wondered the other boat, none?
If I'm a employee, which I am, but I'm not a worker there, I just have a one and a half percent. And everybody gets something.
Are we talking courthouse employees only?
No.
No?
He's talking about the whole county.
The whole county?
Yeah.
The, the two problems I have with Baker Tilly strongly urged us about changing salaries because that changes budgets. It was their recommendation to look at a bonus-style structure for increases for the next year or so until we figure out what bottom lines are gonna look like. That, that worries me a little bit and I would have to have their gracious to do that, not saying we couldn't.
Yeah.
And then even though I'm a recipient, my nine-to-five job of percentage raises, I'm not a huge proponent of them because I think those benefit the people who make the most and the people on the bottom who don't make the mo, much money. A one and a half percent's a lot less.
I agree with that. Anytime you give a percentage raise, some people make more than others.
And that's, I mean. I agree with that, and that is a very good benefit of that.
So anyway, even to say that, though, I don't, I know there's gonna be departments have money left over. We don't know for sure how much, there's a bill money coming out.
Well, could we, could we appropriate the money tonight and talk about it more on the thirtieth? Would have better numbers?
We could do that. And the thing is, on the fifteenth, all the, everyone is supposed to have their claims in for the end of the year, by the fifteenth. So I'd say by at least the eighteenth, we ought to have a good idea of what would be coming out of that and what should possibly be left over.
So I know you gave them the deadline on Monday. What happens if someone submits it on the twentieth and says this claim needs to be played, paid out in twenty twenty-five budget? Will that be done?
Decide that it was not.
Are you gonna say no? Well, I mean, I thought so, but I just wanted to make sure because I want to know, want everyone to have the same expectation of what's gonna happen. You know, if you don't get it in, a claim in, then it's not getting paid. If it's after Monday, did you give Monday as the day?
Monday to fifteenth.
So do you need?
I don't want, I guess that was my problem, is I don't, I want to make sure that that's a firm date so that we look at something on the eighteenth and you guys are making a decision based on that information that we have on the eighteenth, that there's not a surprise in those intervening couple of weeks.
I agree with that.
Do you need criteria to make this tonight or will that be something we did later in the year? If we, whichever way we went, if we were to go either way or anyway?
If we, if we're gonna appropriate more money, I will need to know by Friday, the twelfth, to know so they can be advertised for the thirtieth meeting.
Which if you do.
So we mean on the thirtieth?
Well, you can't appropriate, if you're talking about the twenty, I'm sorry, go ahead. We can't do it this, I mean, we can't advertise it for the thirtieth because you have to appropriate in twenty twenty-six, right?
Right. But if you're doing a bonus for twenty twenty-five, we can still do it on the thirtieth, but I have to know by the twelfth to be able to advertise in time for the thirtieth.
Is that something you guys want to look at or are you gonna just look at the twenty-six?
Advertise for seventy-five thousand.
I think it's better.
Well, if we appropriate the money to that, at least it's there. Right.
I'm not sure. I don't like that though, because there's a lot of concerns about, that I've been approached. There's people that aren't gonna receive it or who disgruntled because they're not gonna receive it. There's, I, I don't know, there's a lot of, you know, with the whole bond thing, there's people saying, well, you know, you guys did do the bond, but now you're giving people, you try to explain to them it's not the same piece of pie. At the end of the day, right, right, right. At the end of the day, you know, tax dollars, tax dollars in their mind. It's, you're spending seventy-five thousand dollars still regardless of how you look at it and you just got a bond. So I agree a hundred percent that they do need something, a hundred percent. I just like that idea because it's, it's a raise and it's across the board as opposed to the fifteen hundred. I promise you, we're gonna be crucified for it.
I agree with that. I mean, I think it is, I mean, I know I'm the low man on the token though here, but if we're speaking for the, we're here for taxpayers. I mean, I'm no offense when I say this, I don't work for you guys, I work for taxpayers. And one and a half percent to two percent would be great for whatever.
What we can do.
Well, and I will be the first to say, I'm not a union steward for employees, I'm not here to advocate for employees. I appreciate everything they do, I do represent taxpayers as well. But our longevity system in this county is a joke. I mean, if you work here for five years and we hand you six hundred dollars, you might as well slap an employee in the face. I think in twenty-six, I would love to, you know, like the Sheriff's Office has the matrix idea. I think Nick has a, what's he called his tier system? I would love to be able to work with the commissioners, put together a board to come up with a, a method, kind of like what you have, kind of like what Nick has, that benefits everybody across the board, kind of the same to where, like, if you were hired in the Sheriff's Office, you could look at a thing, a map, for lack of better words, and know kind of where you're gonna be. I mean, you don't want to spend money you're not gonna get, but you kind of have an idea where you're going. Same way with EMS. If you hire into the county and the Prosecutor's Office putting together paperwork for our great prosecutors, you're gonna work five whole years and get six hundred dollars that we could all spend on groceries at Walmart, to be quite honest. I mean, it's, I think that drastically needs some attention and it needs some attention quicker than putting it off a whole nother year. Because if we don't take care of employees, you're not gonna have any, a turnaround costs way more than retention. So for what that's worth, I agree with that.
Yeah. Also, my thinking is, we're not gonna sure if we're laying up this year, I think a year, and next year, we still don't know exactly what we're gonna be at, so. I mean, they deserve something, but done with that all out there once and at the end of next year, we're back in the same boat. And we already took the bond out, so we're.
Again, I don't.
Free that money.
I don't want to use the word fair, but you gotta do something comparable to everybody because you can't, you know, work in any position and make astronomically more every year and then work in a position for Will and be like, well, you send those guys where they go, but we give you nothing. I mean, it's.
It is. It's a tough conversation.
But no, I'm just saying, like, you guys are both here, but.
I mean, I don't see anybody working to try to get your job away from me. I'm telling you, they may say that.
I would like, I'd like to let Jennifer take a look and see what we're gonna have.
And that's, that's fair.
That amount of money we can appropriate or however we want to do it. It can be one and a half, two, whatever we can afford. But we get everybody something.
For twenty twenty-six, right?
Yeah. Which I think, I mean, even no matter what, at this point, it's practically gonna be twenty-six, no matter what route this board goes, but.
Yeah, unless you make the decision tonight to do one, I could still be on this payroll, but that's.
I just, I think, I think we need to fight for the people that work for us because they're our biggest, biggest asset, but biggest expense as well. But if we don't take care of them, I mean, there's some really, really good people in this county that get up and come to work every day. You know, and I will say, if at any point I'm included in it, I don't want a raise of any kind.
Well, and one of the things, I will say, that's been kind of a question here. Actually, elected officials cannot change their pay and a bonus or stipend is considered changing pay during the year. It can only be done at budget time, so.
But I don't want.
Once you're separate of the year, you're separate of the year.
I put my name on a ballot and I know what I was getting myself into, I guess.
So when, when do you need, when do you, when can you have some answers?
I think after the fifteenth, we should be able to give you an idea.
We're gonna, we're gonna have to meet on the thirtieth, I think.
Yeah, but we appropriate the money when, thirtieth or what?
Yes.
No, are you talking about raises for twenty twenty-six? We determine that, you would have to wait in twenty twenty-six, we're gonna have to, so. Because we didn't do a Form One budget for the bond, we're gonna have to move whatever we appropriated for the sheriff out of those three funds into the bond fund, but we could also do an appropriation and a change in the salary ordinance. If we make a decision in enough time for Jennifer.
If we. But the money we have this year, we can incorporate into next year campaign.
No.
It would just fall back.
That's what I mean, it'd fall back to the.
It reverses back, yeah.
So if it came out of the general to go to Jennifer, if it came out of lit, it'll go back to lit if it come out of.
Try not to.
Yeah. And you can't, you absolutely can't. Other than if you were to give raises to the Sheriff's Office, I guess you could use.
Yes, the bond fund can only be used to pay the expenses of the bond, we can use it to pay back. And this is right in the ordinance that we all passed, so I was a little confused with some of the discussion last week, not from this board. It can only be used for the, like, we could take what we paid out of the general fund for litigation expense and pay back the general fund from those proceeds. You guys need to decide, and that's what we need to know for the first meeting in twenty-six, how you do want to allocate that. You gotta use it for the sheriff's budget, you can, you can use it to pay back litigation expenses we paid out of general, any of those kind of items. But it cannot be used to give, you know, Prosecutor's Office employees raises. It only has to be, can be used for the sheriff's budget or the judge, the cost of the judgments and the litigation. So we have not done a Form One budget for that. The only thing in the ordinance that was appropriated was the cost and fees, it was appropriated for those to be paid out. So now we gotta figure out, what are we gonna unappropriate that we put in the twenty-six budget from general fund and the two lit funds? Unappropriate from there and re-appropriate our bond fund for the sheriff's budget and the jail budget.
Do we need to vote to have her do that or just go check out the fund?
We.
But.
And to advertise for, yeah.
No, the thing is, the paper will be shut down for two weeks. And I know that we can begin Gateway, but I think that is the beginning of January. So I think it takes fourteen to fifteen days on the new, to be a gateway. So we can't, we could advertise anything we know we need to advertise, we can do that by the nineteenth of December. It'll come out in the December twenty-fourth paper. And then we could advertise then for the January ninth meeting. Or January thirteenth, I'm sorry, January thirteenth.
The issue you guys are gonna have as far as the bond funds go is that you're gonna have payroll on the ninth. And so that first payroll will already be spent out of wherever it's appropriated for twenty-six. So let's say, just give a round number, there's two hundred thousand dollars for overtime. But there's fifty thousand spent, I know that's inappropriate, I'm just trying to do round number, fifty thousand's been on first payroll. Well, we wouldn't then appropriate two hundred thousand again out of the bond fund, we would have to determine.
Be kind of like what we went.
What we went through when we did the agreed judgment, had some appropriations and not. So we would only appropriate, you know, that fifty thousand would be gone out of whatever fund we budgeted already for twenty-six. So we'd have to appropriate, unappropriate the hundred fifty thousand we appropriated into the bond fund. So it's gonna be a lot of, a lot of math and a lot of drafting of the particular documents. As far as a raise, you guys would need to decide what percentage so Jennifer would know to advertise. I mean, if you know that three percent's your top, have her advertise for the January thirteenth meeting, a three percent for every employee and that you can.
It could always come down.
You can always come down, you could never go up.
I think that's a good idea.
So do you, could you do that? Can you get payroll numbers?
Jennifer's like, I hate some of these meetings.
She's tired.
Man, I tell you what, I love the weeks where we have a commissioner and council meeting exacting that.
I don't think you were expecting that that way.
Yeah, because you had nothing better to do this week. Where are you going? You don't want us to pick on the Prosecutor's Office anymore, but. We're pretty good. Whoever's sitting in the audience.
Does that take care of your concerns, Mr. Elizabeth?
Everybody good on that then, so far? We'll look at some numbers and.
I still need some direction though on if we're gonna try to do the budget for the bond on the thirteenth and the first meeting of the year. I need to know, right now, the twenty-six budget's coming for the sheriff and the jail is coming out of those two lit funds and the general. Do you want to move, do you want to try to move most of it to the bond fund? Do you want to move general or all the lits and leave it at the general? I, I mean, we don't really know the direction, I mean, we can advertise it so everything gets moved, you know, and then we can make the decisions, I guess, at meetings if you can advertise the whole number of the budget being appropriated out of the bond. And then we can decide, but we'll have to just also know, probably have to do it on the plaque, because we'll have to do it on it's unappropriating where it's already at and re-appropriating to the bond fund, yeah. And we'll probably need, Jennifer, we'll need to know what the fees are that are out of that because that will take down the balance of the budget.
And I don't have all of those.
I know. So. I'm guessing it'll probably be, if I had to guess, two hundred fifty, three hundred thousand, because we got Bear.
Ross Brown Todd.
I got Ross Brown Todd.
We got mine and Ross Brown Todd.
I got yours today.
We sold to Baker Tilly.
From New Wash Bank.
And Bear.
But I don't have Baker Tilly and I don't have Bear.
Okay.
Which, for anybody watching or anybody wants to know, the, the bond is a done deal, it's in the bank. We received the money today. But there was a lot of discussion and I'm not gonna get down in the weeds on all of this. Nobody here on this board, I don't think, wanted to rush out and be like, oh, great, let's get a bond. But I think we all have to agree, the numbers have been super tight and there was, if there was any wiggle room at all, it wasn't gonna make it. And so that's where we led, we relied on advice from attorneys, numerous of them. And sometimes on this board, you just gotta take the best of the worst decisions in front of you and go with it. And that's what we did, what we had to do to shore up some accounts, to make the county whole and good. In that, the, I guess, little silver lining is the bank that bought the bond is a local bank that has a branch right here in Scott County. And all of that money that's paid back stays kind of in the county because we're paying a local business. So it's not, I don't like you're paying some far-off land for something. And it is property tax, which I think, the last numbers I've seen in Baker Tilly, supposed to send me another breakdown of that, is in the twenty, thirty dollar range on properties for the most part.
Well, I've got the original breakdown, but I don't have a new one, so I can.
Jason's supposed to send a new one, so I'm gonna ask him for that, that way I can have it. So I want to put that out to everybody to see just kind of where we're gonna be after today. He said he would work on it, I'm guessing he just didn't have time, but I think everybody deserves to see what we see on that. But we're not talking about a huge astronomical change, just that's where we're at to be able to shore this up and to move forward. I think we beat the bonus thing to death. The one thing I will say is, are you guys good if I reach out to the commissioners and ask about formulating a, what do you call, a board? To look at, I guess, benefiting. to look at, I guess, benefits in the twenty six year for employees?
I think, I think it's a great idea. Uh, cuz I was thinking about that and then we go, it's financially, we may not be able to do something for them. You know, as much as we'd like to do, because we all agree, they deserve it. But there's other ways to give benefits outside of financial. Um, whether it be, you know, an X amount off, I, I don't know. I don't wanna get into weeds like that, but additional days off, whatever the case may be, there's gotta be ways that we can say, I love to work for the county.
And I think it would be nice to have a board, so it's not council making the decision or commissioners making the decision. I think we deserve representation on that board as well as the commissioners, but maybe some department heads or some general citizens or whatever, put together a board that can pitch ideas come up, because it will require changing county handbooks. Possibly even, you have a merit handbook, it may change if you change like PTO days. You know, one idea that was pitched that isn't bad is offer an employee their birthday as a PTO day, things like that. And I think it would be nice to work with the commissioners just to.
Everybody be having birthday every day.
Together.
State parks.
But, uh, if you guys are good with that, I'll ask them and see if that's something we can work on in twenty six or make that a priority. So, alright, moving on.
Moving on.
Um, River Hills Board appointment, that ends December thirty first, I think. So we need somebody and they have to be a council member on that board.
Well, I might not on that board.
You absolutely can be.
I was, I am.
Well, we can keep you, we can keep you for as long as you wanna be. I've got enough boards.
Oh, I'm good with it. I just, I didn't understand that.
I think it just, that term changes.
I nominate John Linsley.
Yeah, I second that.
Give me one, nobody.
All in favor of John Linsley being on my board. Seven O. There's some paperwork, I think, on that one, in there?
Yeah.
Do you wanna do that after?
We can.
We just have it. John, she got the paperwork. We'll just have you sign it afterwards. But they do real.
Year to year.
They do really, really good work. And I know you've been invested in it. I'm not, not cracking on. I honestly just have a bunch of boards that I sit on and I can't keep track of it sometimes. Uh, next up, under the commissioners, they requested an additional appropriation from Venture Trucking Fund for a holiday meal in the amount of five thousand dollars.
I'll make that motion.
I'm just curious, I'm for that too, where they're, where they're doing it. Have they done it before?
Yeah, it was usually like Thanksgiving, right?
It's usually Thanksgiving, but we didn't get it done in time.
So I think now they're gonna do a.
I think they hand them out, don't they?
They're doing it.
I said coupons for like Bistro or something.
I don't know how to do that, yeah.
I'm sorry.
It's for employees, right?
Yes, it's for employees.
It's a thank you.
Really, it's for, I mean, in that one, they have done the elected officials in the past. In the past, they have done a meal. They've either delivered it, brought it here, whatever. Uh, I think this time they're gonna try to do a voucher system.
I just, I'm.
Well, didn't they do like the Bistro last year? They said they pass us all certificates out.
I was, I guess there was some confusion if it was for in-house or if it was for needy.
And I don't know, let's for our employees.
Okay, alright.
I didn't know how they come up that number either.
Just what was, um, what was spent in the past, yeah.
Yeah. Well, John's super hungry. Can we have that number?
I already started tonight. It's already answered, guys.
Ordinance twenty twenty five dash ninety four, it's an ordinance for an additional appropriation and it's from the Venture Trucking, where they park trucks at the old John Jones building.
John Jones.
For the, uh, holiday meal for employees in the amount of five thousand dollars. I made that motion. John Miller's made a motion to accept, second by John Collins. Any questions or comments? Not all in favor? You enter out on that one here.
And I might add, if anybody's hearing that, that's somebody that's brought in excess of our tax figures. We, we let, we give them a place to park their vehicles. We get, I think, twenty thousand a year or something.
It went up some distance.
Fifteen hundred a month.
Yeah.
Yeah. So anyway, that's.
But yes, good point. I don't, we're not using.
Yeah.
I've had enough confusion on that. Next up is an additional appropriation request from the Unrestricted Opioid Fund. And it's related to the City Hall building. I don't really know exact reasons. I'm guessing renovation type things for sixty seven thousand, five hundred, sixty eight dollars and ninety four cents, which is kind of like precise. Is there a reason?
That's all that's in it.
That's the reason it's precise.
Now, explain that again?
I will. Ordinance twenty twenty five dash nine five. Uh, it is an ordinance for an additional appropriation. It is our county commissioners asking for unrestricted opioid funds. The whole amount that's in the fund, sixty seven thousand, five hundred, sixty eight dollars and ninety four cents. And all I can tell you is it was for undisclosed reasons related to City Hall.
I, I'm not doubting any of the money. I would. I think we've kind of talked this back before, but I'd like to know where it's going.
We bought the City Hall building on the square.
I think they wanted to put them in their council.
I feel you, I don't know that, but. We now, it's gonna become a.
I think that's what they wanted to do.
And I don't know what the heck we're gonna call it.
How came, why did we buy it?
Well, because it was either that or face a mandate to build onto this courthouse, so we bought that building to not get a mandate to build onto this courthouse. So that was six hundred thousand out of our money or mandate was potentially twelve to fourteen million, so six hundred thousand was a cheaper move.
Are any of the plans done yet?
The ones, ones I've seen are the ones the guy from this company that I've never heard of before handed me tonight.
Yeah, that's exactly.
Yeah, that's, I'm just being honest.
Yeah, that's true.
You can laugh, but I swear, that's all I know.
Well, and I, uh, I'm kind of agreeing with you here, by the way. I know the venture discussion about appropriate money, and I'm, I think they'll probably need a bit of that, but I also kind of like to know where it's going.
I asked them that and they said if they make all the decisions, we get a.
Well, and they do make all the decisions, as we make all the finances.
Right down my throat.
And I got a deep throat.
Well, that's the last commissioner meeting, basically, you're just told that we need to stay our lane.
Exactly.
Don't worry about the money.
I think we're worried about the money, you know, where.
I'd like to know what we're spending.
Finances is our lane.
Exactly. That's what I thought too.
What if they needed a Cadillac Escalade to carry boards over there and go buy that?
I'm not, I, I know what's happening.
Sixty seven thousand dollars.
It's the old Ronald Reagan thing for us to verify.
I ask them to give, just, it's gonna be a thousand dollars for a toy.
I just popped it, I popped it.
You know, just give me a rough idea what you're standing on.
I'm just, I'm being completely honest. But first, I, I did go walk through it with Miller one night with one of the commissioners. They said, we're gonna put an office here, office there. We went through all that. At that time, I said it does, it sounds reasonable. I will say, most of what I was told is on these plans that the solar individuals gave us tonight. Um, other than that, I've never been told anything else about that building. Um, one time I was told that it was gonna be a, something to paint a room for a lot of money. And I haven't seen that either.
There's a, there's a, there's a few of us here that are new, 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 and then new. A- and this is something I've struggled with, because it has been a big topic of controversy. You know, commissioners say the money is there. It's only our job to find out if the money is there. We don't need to be dissecting what it's used for. We just need to approve the money if it's there. Which, I'm totally good with that. I mean, if that's our job and that's what we're to do, I, I agree with that. The problem I have with that is what checks and balances come after that? So if we approve this, which I'm good with it, if it's there, and it's their right to spend it, spend it. But at the end of the day, if we approve sixty seven thousand dollars and they spend that entire sixty that, seven thousand dollars on one room being painted, let's just say, who? Well, I guess, are they together, all three of them, deciding if it, whatever they're spending that money on's fair? Is it being bid? What?
Have you watched?
You know, and it may be fair. The problem of it is, it's not been presented to us and we don't know. I think we're an oversight committee.
But they're saying that's our job.
I think we're financially, we're an oversight committee.
I, I just looked at this actually, cuz I know this has sort of been going on, and it, it's not just Scott County. Every commissioner, every council I've ever represented, whatever body it is. I mean, towns aren't this way, cuz you have one body that's vote, but in the counties, that's just the, the tension, right? It says that you guys are to appropriate funds. You have to vote by majority, vote to appropriate funds. It doesn't say you have to, you must. It actually says, when it talks about the county executive, uh, when that would be the commissioners, that they're supposed to provide you a budget and it's supposed to be these expenses. And then the last item is other expenditures to be made under its order specifically itemized. So, I mean, I guess, what I would say is that, yes, the commissioners can contract someone to come in and do sixty seven thousand dollars worth of work. You guys don't have to vote to appropriate it. The problem in this county has always been that people go out and contract for sixty seven thousand dollars worth of work. The work is done, people expect to be paid. And then we have, you guys are faced with the, with the inimbiable task of you either don't hold your guns and say, we're not appropriating this, cuz you didn't do it the correct way. You didn't come to us first. Or you let the county get sued for having an unpaid bill. So I think you're, you're within your rights. It's either vote on it or not vote on it. But you would not let, you would not give the commissioners a credit card. You would not give any department that a credit card, tell them to go out and spend sixty seven thousand dollars and not ask for their receipts. Called an internal control, which I think the state board of the county just addressed with several documents here, so I was careful.
I have another legal question.
Yeah.
Obviously, it's going to be a lot more than sixty seven thousand dollars to renovate that building.
Mm-hmm.
So if we keep approving little pieces.
Yes.
Is this, is this legal? I mean.
Well, I don't.
I mean, if the overall project ends up being four million dollars, but we.
Yes.
approved it, fifty thousand at a time. I mean, at what point do we? You see what I'm saying?
I'm gonna leave that to Zach.
I think it's a reasonable thing to ask. Where does that money go? When somebody asks me on the street, what are you doing at City Hall? I go, I don't know, I just gave sixty seven thousand dollars. How can you answer the public that way?
Exactly. And my argument was.
We pay for that anyways, it's property taxes.
Our's is opioid, that's how we pay. This comes from unrestricted opioid.
The six hundred thousand that five City Hall paid for American.
I know we're gonna make a bad, we're gonna project.
Well, my goal is not to butt heads, but I do want clarification. Is, what's our job? And if our job is just to say.
Is this nice to make sure, just to make sure this is not.
No, it's, no, it's not.
It's.
But I guess.
This is the one where they did that lawsuit with opioid companies and we get money.
I guess what I would also caution.
I think they want money so they can go ahead and start getting the project done without.
Like give them sixty seven today. I mean, we remember the transportation.
They just want that in their accounts.
We appropriate for that. Then they make them after out the year and ask for additional appropriations, establish twice that, right?
And that would be at nine o'clock, so whatever you all do.
So if you have sixty seven now, you know, you gotta really keep an eye on what else has been appropriated for that.
So.
I mean, we just ultimately, you have to stay in your lane, but your lane is to appropriate.
Unless this will help us.
My issue with this is this.
We need to know this.
My issue is, there's no, no, no bones about it that me and Mr. Gooden have disagreed on some things over the years. But if he wanted sixty seven thousand dollars, he would come in here and he would tell us what he was doing with it. They just had us transfer within their own budget, money to pay for bulletproof vests.
Exactly.
They told us the need and you make it happen. And what I'm saying, like, what I'm saying, like, rightfully so, it's. But rightfully so, you know, if. If. But I'm saying, like, realistically, that, that's what we require of everybody, so why is it any different? If he come in here and said, well, I want sixty seven thousand dollars and I'll let you know what I did with it, I think the vote would be no.
Well, I think that from a legal perspective too, if you just hand out sixty seven thousand dollars to other services and churches, you're also putting yourself at risk too, because what if they do go out and buy a Cadillac Escalade and, and then somebody gets, you know, scrolled off or some ice takes. I mean, you don't know what's gonna happen with it, so I mean.
I think.
You have the right to ask questions. You don't have the right to.
Am I missing? I know there was, like, I don't even know if I wanna say a number, but like fourteen maybe was going towards painting.
A room.
Fourteen thousand, fourteen dollars. And is that now to that total?
I don't know. I never saw it.
So.
But I have not.
That's for that. Have we seen, is there other breakdowns of what?
Is there an invoice?
The remainder.
I have not seen it, no.
Well, I think that that's reasonable too.
I just don't wanna hold them up, but at the same time, I know where fourteen thousand's going, but I don't know where the other, whatever.
Well, for overall fiscal health, how are we supposed to know? Is this a drop in the bucket? Are you supposed to know, are we gonna get into this project sixty seven thousand dollars and then something, we find something that's gonna take two million dollars, how are we gonna pay for that, right?
We may not want to say no.
Yeah, that's what I'm telling you. It's you guys to say, no, I mean.
There's no way you can put two million dollars in that bill.
And he's right, that's your job.
You have the right to ask questions as elected officials.
I'll tell you what.
Can we talk about on the thirtieth?
Well, that or. Do we have an exact, is this the amount we have to?
You have to do.
That's all it takes.
The reason why I say that, we know for sure what the paint is. Can we go ahead and approve the paint number?
I don't even have that exact.
Okay.
I was gonna say, we can approve that.
What if we did twenty thousand? That would get something started. If you know fourteen of it's going.
What if it's been that twenty thousand on some side?
I mean, what if he goes and buys some other bulletproof vest? I don't know. I mean, you gotta believe.
Can we not create a line?
I mean, they could probably.
Amy's like.
A city hall renovation, so we know we can only go for that. I think, I think the part of the problem is, other services and charges can literally be used for anything.
And we, we.
And there's no control over it, just like, you know, they have to cut because they couldn't.
I believe it's not my job to pick the paint color or the carpet. But it's my job to know, we spent this much on paint carpet, we spent this much on that, and be able to answer to people that we did it.
I think it's not only in our lane, I think it's our obligation.
Sorry, I'm just asking. I'm gonna get yelled at for all of.
Well, I mean, I would.
Yeah, it is, but they had the money not in the right line, because. So when you, I was like, when you look at the budgets, you can see under each. That award is, you know, it has to come out, they have to.
Well.
It just had to be moved.
Go for it.
So what I, what, I don't know if you guys heard me, what I asked Jennifer was, why couldn't we create, um.
You, I, I know that.
The other services and churches line is so broad, why couldn't we create like a, a City Hall renovation line under the opioid fund? So that way you can, guys can be insured, at least it's only being used for that City Hall renovation and not a, and I don't see an issue with that.
I'm okay with that, but I still wanna know where it's going.
That's fine. Then call the vote, John?
Yeah, everybody, everybody.
Or do a motion to table it?
Okay, uh, I'm not even sure how to make the motion.
Throw it out, we'll make it happen.
Throw it out, and we, uh, I think we're all, nobody's not against, we're not even.
Well, then just.
I want, I want an ordinance of some sort to say, we wanna know what they're gonna do, some kind of a master plan with City Hall and this, this courthouse.
Well, I don't think that would be an ordinance. I think that that would probably be a conversation between the president of the council and the president of the commissioners.
Help me out here. What do I need to be saying?
The, the sixty seven thousand dollars, do you wanna vote it down?
I'm gonna vote no.
Or do you want to do a motion to table it and rediscover it on the thirtieth, when JR has time to talk to Mr. Julian to see if he can get a plan together? Okay, that's, those are your options.
Uh.
Or vote, yeah.
I don't mind putting it off to the next meeting, but I do, I mean, I'll vote same way next time if I don't have some answers.
I agree, I agree.
Okay. I mean, you have the right to ask the questions.
Yeah. I vote to tramp, uh.
Table it.
Only thing I say is that the judge wants this room and Jennifer's room as soon as he can.
Well, I don't like, but we've got nothing.
I totally understand that, but you know, but I don't know.
I'm just telling you, Jennifer's got a lot going on at the end of the year to be.
Oh, we can, we've got some, we've got some dollars I can recover.
They took my coffee this morning.
Where'd they come from?
Let me say this, let me say this.
Get that over there while his plan.
Let me say this, the sooner they give us answers on City Hall, the quicker they get in here.
Yeah, we need to table, table it then.
So a motion to table till the thirtieth on the floor.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Second by Cheatham, or the motion was made by Mr. Linsalbe, seconded by Cheatham, all in favor of tabling and forcing me to ask questions.
Hang on.
I do feel like.
I can also reach out to the council.
Seven of the table. Yeah, he's only got a couple of weeks.
So nine or nine or five is tabled, Jennifer.
All right, do we need to do anything on the finalization of the bond? It, I think I touched on earlier, there ain't much else to say, it, it hit the bank, we're gonna talk about it some more in January.
No, I do think it was a good thing that we did it with a local, at least a local bank or banks that has a branch locally, I think they gave us a better rate.
They did.
Fees, those bonds, the fees between the attorneys and financial people, the bank fees, um, that's a lot of fees. So getting a good interest rate for the, for the, you know, people and keeping, trying to keep the fees, you know, under control, I think it'll be good. But I'm just more worried now about getting the appropriation done since we didn't do a form one, we didn't know, you know, if we're gonna have four point five or six million or whatever, so Jennifer didn't do a form one, but we'll get it all together.
All right, so let's do that.
All we have to say about it, it's bank and it's there, right?
Next up on the agenda is the area planning commission.
You got two more additionals.
They're down here, huh?
The, uh, okay, the opioid bonus.
We decided, we're not talking about that till.
So is it tabled?
So are we tabling that money that we advertised?
Yes.
I think so, yeah.
I'm making a motion to table. Motion.
We tabled it and she wants to additional money.
Yeah, I made a motion to table, table. We need a second.
Motion on the floor by Miller to table it, the second by Collins, all in favor of tabling that, seven.
And then we've got the health department.
He's got it down here.
I got it on there, I wasn't a hundred percent sure.
If we do do the percentage, do we need to set that for after the first year?
We'd have to do that after the first year. She's gonna advertise up to three percent, so we know we can't go over that, then we can work our way down early January. Yes, no problem. Can I go again?
Yeah, go ahead.
Area planning commission sent me a, uh, email asking about like the extra hours that she had put in. Do we, is there something we need to do with that? Um, cause I know she is.
We've been paying her.
That's what I thought.
We're paying her out of, um, the area plan budget.
That's all, all right, I just wanted to make sure, I told her I would ask, I, maybe that got taken care of.
She feel like she's not getting paid, or?
No, it was on the twenty fourth, so it's been a little while, that email's been a little while.
They came and asked me, I said, yeah, I just paid out there.
Okay, that's what I thought we had talked about, but I wanna make sure, cause there's money there.
Yes, so explain to me again, I, I don't know, do we owe some money or not owe some money, or what's going on here?
We did owe and we paid it, so.
This was a non-issue.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, um, next up is the regional sewer board, they have a board appointment that expires December thirty first, twenty twenty six, and they're looking to replace it. You wanna speak on that?
My name is Terry Jones, I was appointed last year with your approval, um, to serve for region four, which is the areas western sixty five, south of fifty six. And represent this sewer, regional sewer district, replacing hidden Randy Moss place that has died. And, uh, actually, I think I was only at, in the board for about nine months. And now, um, his terms up that they're gonna, they sent me in here to, to get me appointed.
I have one, I have one other person, okay. There was one other person that sent an email asking about that, they could be considered as well, so just so we know both people. Um, it was Mr. Jones and then Chase Harden, who lives in that same area. Chase holds a wastewater license and is deeply invested in the, the sewer organization as well, and he was interested in serving on that board. Should a position come open out in that, that ward, I think is what they call it. So those two have asked, um, for consideration tonight, so whichever way. But yeah, I mean, if you wanna make, you want to move on your motion, do you guys wanna, Chase could be here tonight, he had something, go other meeting, he had to be at. I told him I would talk to him.
Oh, I've had a lot to serve with, you're on the board, I'm learning a lot, we don't have a lot of action out in our, our ward. Um, but it's, it's nice to be part of what's going on and it's, um, it's, it's, it's true, it's really interesting because I think what we're all about is, is good, good water, and when you, uh, take care of the sewers, you're gonna end up having really good water. And it's, I feel like I'm representing our area out there very well, so, but it's, it's, uh, I can walk away from here and, and not be disappointed.
We all feel that way about some boards.
So, yeah, so.
Do you know, does anybody on there, and the only reason I ask, I don't know if you would know, but, um, does anybody hold a wastewater license in that board? You might know, you're a couple, the reason I wonder is going into that, if, I know. Tim, he's talking like going into retirement, well, you had to do some kind of an inspection, I think it would fall back on a license. But I, I don't know if any of them.
Combs, Jason Combs, um, they contract with Jason Combs and he has wastewater license.
Yeah, he's our man.
Yeah.
Out there, or in that.
Yeah, he does their work for them.
Mine, the board recommended Terry last year.
Yeah, and actually, I have an email here from Tom Cypress, it's the attorney. Terry has enthusiastically expressed interest in reappointment and we have sent his name to the Scott County Council for that purpose. We have asked that they take this matter up at their December ninth meeting.
I'd say keep him in there.
I agree. So, or some motion by Collins to retain Mr. Jones, second by Elizabeth, all in favor of that.
If it wasn't a reappointment to go over there, I would look at it differently.
Yeah, that's fair.
And what a recommendation.
Uh, just out of curiosity, and neither here nor there, cause obviously we're already done, are, are you on the system?
No, I'm not.
Okay, and Chase isn't either. Cause that's kind of my thing, and I spoke with a few of you guys, I'm pretty passionate about the fact that if you're gonna, you know, people that are gonna be on that board moving forward, Grant, I think you're doing a fantastic job, don't get me wrong, but I, I think there needs to be at least fifty percent or more of the people on that board, that's voice is actually on the system. Because when there's a board running an organization, that's not even on the system. I mean, if I was on the system, I'd, I'd want my voices to be at least fifty percent, and I, I think it's something we need to address moving forward and look at it, because.
Or, I will say, you know, they sent me a list a while back, I'm looking for it now. Um, so Lori Brown, you probably, I need help with this, Ward one is Lex.
No, I think that's mine, that's, yeah, that's, uh, where I was, Johnson Township.
Johnson Township, so that, that one expires twelve thirty one of twenty six.
And there's some place in Johnson Township that has.
Ward two is till twenty seven, hey.
It literally has.
Good work, good work, Miller. Jason Applegate expires twenty eight, um, the one we just redid, and then Mike Brown.
Okay, so you got a water thing?
Is on, um, twenty six also, so the end of next year, you're gonna have Jennings and Johnson Township up. Food for thought, whoever wanted it.
What it's worth, it's like we talked about earlier, this is, uh, tell me if I'm wrong here, this is not, they generate their own money. We don't pay for the board.
User fees.
Uh, they're their own entity, just like City of Scottsburg or County, just the public know where we're at, all we've even got to point from.
Do they ever turn in, I don't know if they have to, um, like financials from that?
I got shit on them.
Who does that go to for like checks and balances? Do we know?
We do them internally.
Well, actually, they do them internally, and they're not part of the water system, which kinda hinders this regional sewer district because City of Scottsburg, City of Austin, the people get too far behind, their water gets cut off, cause it's tied together. Regional sewer just gets stuck with people's.
Well, you can't, you can't really go turn that off.
Turn that off.
Yeah.
They, they feed off either City of Scottsburg or Stucker Ford. And a few of them can't water company.
And we just, we get, we get a few on there that, oh, I, I call it, and we're looking into this illegally hooking up to us.
I've heard that, yeah.
Is that like, that's not an easy feat to do, I, I work through that system every day, so, um, yeah, that's interesting. But I, I personally, for me, in a vote with the two that are falling off, I would love to see in the twenty sixth year, some kind of financials to see like what, if you're doing good, if you're not, it's just, if I have to vote to put someone on a board, I would, I would love to see some track of checks and balances for, for my vote, for what it's worth.
We can do that.
And when your meeting?
Uh, our next meeting is, um.
Are they still out there on the?
We're at the Buchanan building.
Yeah.
The old, um.
On the corner of Boatman and.
Boatman and.
Yeah, where the new roundabout's about to go.
But you have a monthly meeting, same day every month.
Yep.
Open, open, I've been to their board meetings, I've been to those board meetings, but they're, they're open to the public, anybody can come.
John goes there.
But, no, we're, we're open, we have.
I don't see, it's in the paper advertised when your meetings are, should be.
Who gets the paper?
Yeah, I'm sure it's a legal meeting and we.
I hate, don't get me on that, so, I ain't got no, no, we're staying on. Thank you for your service, I, I do not in any way say you're not doing a fine job, I just, just bringing up another name that was sent to me, I appreciate your, your enthusiasm on that.
Let's go ahead.
All right, you need anything else from us, Terry? Sorry, thank you. Next up was the health department, they had a request for an additional appropriation for the amount of forty three thousand, six hundred, twenty four dollars. And to be honest, I had to look this fund up, cause I had no idea what it meant. It's a coag response, I still don't know what it does, but it looks like we pay somebody payroll out of there and the account ran down.
I think we need to.
School nurse that's paid out there.
There's a, I don't know, anyway, they need forty three thousand, six hundred, twenty four dollars to make that account whole.
They grant us.
They grant us funds. It's, it's some kind, I think it's some kind of a home rule fund, the eighty one oh one, so it would have to be incoming either at grant or one of those state stipends for health department services, it is not tax money, I can tell you that.
I'll move the week, give the additional appropriation.
So on ordinance twenty twenty five dash nine seven, a motion from Collins to approve in full, second by Elizabeth, all in favor for the health department, seven of them. I have one more thing for the health department that she contacted me on, she was hoping to be here, but had a family issue she had to take care of. They have a health board appointment that we made, um, Stephanie Cox, a few months back, into that appointment to fill it. Um, the term ends December thirty first, and they would love for Stephanie to retain on that board, and Stephanie would love to serve on that board. I would like to make a motion that we retain Stephanie Cox as the health board appointment.
I'll move we retain Stephanie Cox for, uh, health department board.
A motion by Collins, second by Elizabeth, all in favor of that board appointment, seven oh, and I will let her know, but if you'll reflect that, of course, I appreciate it. All right, and then Sheriff's Department, we did transfer funds, what else you got, Sheriff?
I think we asked about, that was a follow-up, we'll be able to, after those.
You know what, that's what I've got so far, we might need to work and get some more, we'll do another batch, yeah, I was just saying, we'll do another batch.
Do those on the thirtieth, be okay? Be good.
Well, we have some other things to make around this line.
Can I? Okay. What do we have?
We got that in our mail for that. Oh, okay, all right.
Yeah, we, we weren't aware of that until today, which side you want to start with?
You're gonna go through that whole stack?
Yes, I am, I'll be very quick. Very quick.
No, they're not all transferred. You took care of those ones, uh, did you wanna talk about that first? That got changed with the way, where we was taking.
New senior, right?
Come on up.
Yeah, we ain't the only one, we didn't either.
Yeah, we came with the underwear and teeth.
Uh, the only thing I was here to talk about was this longevity pay for some people that's not on that matrix system.
Okay.
Uh, that's a, as far as I can read into it, that is a handbook issue. So that everybody is given that longevity through the handbook.
Through the handbook.
Yes, cause they're salary employees, they're not, they're not hourly or they're not on the matrix, it's, uh, appointed.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying, positions, so, they've always got the.
Longevity pay.
Yes, yes, because they're not on the matrix scale.
I guess.
The main one was Doug, he's got it every year, but this year's.
Okay.
And it's on the budget. He wasn't, he wasn't optional until the last, the last time.
Okay.
So, but no, Doug should have been.
You know what I'm saying, when you try to.
Doug and Toby?
Doug and Toby.
We will need to transfer some, cause I think there's twelve hundred in there, because we had Kyle West from twenty twenty four.
He's on the sheriff's side.
He's on the matrix.
Yeah. He wouldn't get it this year, unless you're paying for it.
This was for his twenty twenty four bill, we brought this to you.
From the last.
I remember that. Oh, but yeah, we can do a transfer for that, and then do you want to just do that on the thirtieth, that transfer?
One other thing I wanted to talk about was this, of course, it's not involving lawsuit, may involve, if Heather thinks it is, then we, we can do it about it later. But that is the matrix paid for twenty twenty six, they was not given the bonus, you know, their longevity increase for twenty twenty six, and they budgeted with.
And nobody has yet, that's one of the reasons I asked to try to work a board to, hopefully, we can go with something along your idea for twenty six, for all county employees to be more like John said, more fair, I hate that word, but more comparative and competitive across the board of all employees. So not saying they're not going to, it just isn't gonna start that way right out of the gate, because we have to get the commissioners on board to talk about it.
Well, it looks like we're gonna be talking about a percentage across the board, right?
And that could be.
That's, that's what I wanted to talk, that's what I wanted to say is this, of course, that's what our longevity is, is a percent and a half, okay? So if that's what you wanted to get the rest of the county, that would make all my employees up to the, you see what I'm saying? It'd be, they would be caught up on their matrix scale, uh, and the reason why I say that is, is that we're talking about fifteen thousand dollars, is what the total cost is gonna be for these folks to be bumped up. Uh, that's to follow the corridor that we had last year, for those raises, you know what I'm saying?
I just, I want you to know, we're not saying no, nobody here is saying no, we're just saying, I would love for that not to just, you should fight for your people. Don't get me wrong, you should do exactly what you're doing right now, you should come in here and fight for your people, but every other person should too, every other director. And so to make it more of an umbrella, instead of saying fair, that covers all of the employees, I would love to look more at like maybe what John's talking about, and then devise a way that the entire county is compensated equally, or what they should.
Yeah, everybody deserves.
Sure, I'm never gonna sit here and say anybody doesn't deserve, I mean, I get that, and I think we, I absolutely agree. Um, but to say January one, there's gonna be a pay matrix, isn't fair, cause I want, would love to expand what the one and a half is going.
The only problem we got is, is that was last year's agreement, that's a twenty year job, that's a maintenance service contract, is what that is. Twenty year service contract that was given.
I'm not gonna get into that.
No, that's what I'm saying, you decide.
But the longevity also, when he talks about, I just wanna be clear, when you talk about doing like a, a group with the, or a committee, or a working group, or whatever you wanna call it, about longevity and the benefits and stuff, it's not gonna change the handbook as it is now, the longevity that's in there is not gonna change. And let, unless the commissioners and, and.
I would like for it to change.
But I'm just saying, it's not gonna go, it's not, longevity's not going away.
Because, I mean, just for prime example, your chief deputy has been here since February of the very first year that you came in, appointed in that position, and has worked through his tenure, and now we're handing him a check for four hundred and eighty seven dollars after taxes.
Six hundred, and then you take the taxes out of it, so, yeah.
Not that I would, you might as well walk over there.
Right, well, in twenty nineteen, we tried to, the same thing, you know, since this thing's been going on for a long time, try to get the rest of the county on.
And I've, I've said for a long time, I think I just need to beat that bush a little harder, that we gotta do something, because this, this current wait till December, whatever, isn't working, and it's not, not good for people who get up from the work every day. All right.
Okay, are you ready?
So do you need to make a motion for Doug and him, or is that already done, cause it's already in the handbook?
We're just gonna transfer the money, so I'm gonna have that ready to go.
I didn't know if you had to make a motion to do it.
If it's in the handbook, we're gonna follow the rules, so.
Okay.
All right, I have a question. I have the low end on, so don't vote here. Sheriff Good just made a statement, there's a court order, elected officials can't go against the court order.
Twenty twenty five, yes.
We entered into.
We entered into a court agreement and.
That's where we're gonna have another disagreement, because it's a twenty year work contract, it's a contract like you would sign. That is a signed contract, a twenty year agreement, but anyway, I'm not gonna talk about that.
I don't, I'm not gonna sit here and say anybody that works in your office doesn't deserve what, what they get, so.
I'm just asking what we all agreed to.
I get it. Amy, better.
Yes, sir, cause it might turn out.
I guess.
Okay. I'm figuring it out, and there are no bills that haven't been turned in, other than a couple, I have that on here. We are going to bring back a thousand dollars from the merit board, seventy nine hundred and fifty eight dollars and forty five cents from training and investigating.
Why do we bring that much?
We won't, we have pulled all of our bills out, and I'm done with everything.
Will you pay them?
No, 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 this is what's left, you will know what's left.
Okay, I got it, I got it, sorry, I'm with you.
Okay.
It's all, but you keep me.
Okay, office supplies, this is the sheriff's side, we'll have thirteen hundred and thirty one dollars and twenty four cents. Tires and parts will be two hundred and eighty one dollars and ninety seven cents. Tires and parts will be two hundred and eighty-one dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Is that after your transfer, what we did today?
Yeah, that's including that.
Didn't you yell at me?
No, I just asked a question.
Fuel will have thirty-seven, forty-nine, thirty-four. Uniforms will have four thousand sixty-eight dollars and eight cents. Radio repair line will have fourteen hundred. Software will have the ten thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars left. However, we do not have, there was none put in software for next year.
Cause I think that goes to Andrew.
Well, we do have, we have Lieberman and others that we have to pay. So that's, yeah, that's.
That ten thou, that was the exact amount of money that he paid. What's that name?
Well, that bill is fifteen thousand. It's fifteen thousand.
That's still, they're, they're done in us for that bill.
Yeah. But we have none for next year.
Cause there's no contract again. There's no nothing. They have something from, they bought a company and say, all of a sudden we owe them X amount of dollars, way more than what we're in. Anyway.
We've been working on that for what a year?
Too long.
But we do have other software places we pay. We pay Lieberman, we pay SRI, we pay, uh, GFC. So we do have several. Lieberman is our receiving system for our, our sex offenders, uh, sheriff sales, stuff like that. GFC is the one I do payroll on. That's what we deal with that one. And, um, SRI does our sheriff sales now. So.
Are you gonna need an additional? Is that what you're saying? You're gonna need additional in twenty-six?
Why do we have the other?
Well, I, I mean, if I could just encumber that ten thousand.
She's gonna do my additional preparation because it wasn't budgeted. So if it wasn't budgeted.
I mean, it should have been on the budget, but they took it off. So I didn't have any control.
I see what you're saying. What you're asking is because it reverts back in twenty-five, but no, it's gonna be.
There's a completely separate fund that exists for sheriff sales. So couldn't we pay your software out of that fund? And then.
But Julie, on software, I think SRI is a contract, isn't it? That's what we need on our side.
That other fund is a discretion every time. So we can't use that.
There is two.
Home rule.
There's been one forever. Home rule fund.
Don't mean it's right.
The sheriff sale.
Anyway, if I can move that one, I would for you. That would move it completely out of that because we pay them already out of it.
Didn't we just utilize what's started to put some in there?
For her side, but it's the same company.
Yeah, twenty-six went back to go back bill.
Yeah, we might have to look at that one because I'd say this. We thought all that. Maybe we could clean that up a little bit.
That would be nice.
With the new computers and all that.
But anyway, at the end of that total.
Yeah.
Thirty thousand, six hundred and four dollars and eight cents that will not have been used.
Thirty thousand.
Yeah, would that be covered over next year?
Well, thirty thousand, six oh four, like what the projected number is. All right.
Now, and that's, we do have all our bills. I have all of them taken out on this that we're gonna be sending out. Um, the one that we're, we would like to do would be move from the full-time deputy line. Eleven thousand dollars, put it into our, um, overtime line. So that way we would still have enough to get to the end of the year paying the rest of our, because we've got one more pay that comes out.
Why is that money left over? I'm just curious.
Cause we've been short.
We've been short some people. So we're trying to move it around.
Last month. It's like a deputy leaving. Yeah. Pay there.
Right. So, but that way we would be still using the budget.
Making a list of these.
I'm not.
I will, I will send that out.
Will you copy me on, will you copy me on the email if you send one?
How much money you got?
Uh, I'm broke.
Well, no.
All right, yes.
He makes the agenda. So we went on the agenda.
Um, we will have with those two pays fourteen thousand left in our full-time deputy line. So moving these funds like we've had to do this year.
Is that in the thirty thousand or is that?
That's separate.
That's, no, we don't include.
So she wants to transfer eleven thousand in her, the red side.
Yeah.
Yeah, because you know, we'll have one more pay.
For this, for December thirty.
Yes.
Eleven seventy funds.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Shouldn't keep up with these.
I know they're paying me.
Hey. You're gonna get me in trouble.
I said, but.
I got rid of that guy with cuffs looking to replace him with that guy.
Okay, and that, you, that could be really.
You know what I'm saying?
You can try them if you want to go back there and we'll work on them right now. In fact, I was gonna ask.
I haven't got anything else to do.
We don't, we don't either. I mean, I'm not opposed to like a break so I can go to the bathroom.
Well, I'm just asking because I'm afraid that.
You guys don't go to the bathroom before you come to meeting night?
I've been here for an hour and a half.
You've been sitting here forever. I've been afraid. JR put us on the bottom.
It was the last one you know.
Told about. Payroll runs on the thirtieth, then.
I'll get it to you tomorrow. It's no big deal. It's, that's fine.
I was gonna say, if we do a transfer tonight, because I don't have enough money to do longevity out of line, but if we could do that.
You trying to spend more money? Are you trying to take more money?
No, what happened was we.
Collins came out of it. Yes.
Well, only Doug's couldn't come out of that one. That's on Doug's side.
But I think he's still at more than twelve hundred dollars.
How would Kyle and Doug be on the same side?
I, I don't, I don't know.
Never mind.
I didn't do that.
We actually. Question is gonna make us feel a lot more, yeah, a lot of limited.
Sorry, sorry.
With my mouth tonight.
Okay, I will get that to you at the first light in the morning.
Well, yeah, I was gonna say, but if we could do that tonight, that way that could hit this payroll Friday.
Jennifer's asking if we can have a.
You need that, you need that for this Friday or the next Friday at the end of the month? We're not gonna leave again till the thirtieth.
Does that mean Doug will get his check sooner for the twenty-six?
When we get at this payroll.
Okay.
Cause I think, I think from what she told.
It's not Doug, Amy's fault.
Oh, not even.
I think she has to create a payroll.
I got that email. You want me to pull it out? Well, and the other thing on the sheriff's side, before we went any further, the sheriff was wanting to give, um, with some that we had left. Funds to their, a bonus to the people because of us being so short and the others worked it.
Think we beat that idea today.
Well, this is sure. This is different. It's not, it, it's already in our budget. It's not coming from anywhere else. It is strictly our budget.
Entertain that.
I didn't even hear that. I just.
Want to give a bonus to employees that work at the sheriff's.
I think that you've got, it's gotta have, if you're gonna give bonuses, I'm gonna go back to Wagner Shilly said it's gotta be a set criteria.
Across the board.
Across the board for everybody. So if you give those sheriff people bonuses that already got raises because they're on the matrix for twenty twenty-five.
You're gonna have to.
You're gonna have to, you're gonna have to entertain. I mean, I guess you could say it's only for the sheriff's department, but.
Give that five thousand. They asked for not, that's probably what, that's probably what they're thinking about is helping somebody in some way. What's that? We, we don't, they asked for five thousand dollars to transfer it not from denture.
Oh, for the holiday meal.
That's their idea of what's a bonus or thank you or something.
That's you get, and I understand what you're saying, Amy, that, that you want to take it out of funds that are there, but bonuses are not payroll nor bonuses full-time or overtime. But it's not really appropriated for that.
We were also directed to use our budget for everything. So these funds otherwise would be.
If you were a manager, I won't, you were directed to use your budget, your whole budget, like every.
We weren't gonna get any extras. So this is funds that will be returning from that budget that was completely. It is great for the taxpayers, but at the same time, we worked our butts off and we were short and these people filled in hour after hour. Yes, they got overtime. But they've lost out on a lot of stuff because they weren't able to be there.
Well, I would like to talk to Wagner Shilly about that because I don't want, if we're not entertaining the notion, if we're entertaining the notion of a percentage raise for everyone next year. Your criteria is you're employed by the county period, doesn't matter what position you're in. That's a lot different. Just like I went to Wagner Shilly and said, can we give those forty-three people that didn't get a raise in any way, shape or form for twenty-five? So I want to make sure that this is not going to be considered discriminatory because it was even asked to me when I asked them about, um, when I asked them about doing the bonus, well, how could it be, what about the people that did get raises? How is that not discriminatory to people that didn't? You didn't have a criteria. You didn't give the whole thing. So I want to make sure we're not putting that self in that situation that that, that people who, who've gotten no raise for twenty twenty-five aren't going to claim that this is not fair.
Well, that's, that's gonna be the way, if anything you do, just like James said, anytime you mention a bonus, you know what I'm saying? People get upset. Here's the issue that we have is this. So we, again, made a deal last year. We all signed it. We all agreed to it. We all, everybody was hunky-dory with it. Okay? And then we get to twenty-six and it's like, well, no, we're not gonna give you your.
We're not even to twenty-six yet.
The, yeah, you just passed the salary ordinance. That's what I'm talking about. Salary ordinance shows what the person, each person.
Right, but we also changed that throughout the year commonly.
Well, and here's the take about it. Here's, here's, here was the whole take on it. If we weren't gonna be able to get our percent and a half. Like they were supposed to got through the court order, then we was gonna, this would be about a percent and a half.
They got what you asked for for twenty twenty-five, correct?
Say what now?
They got what you asked for when you said was.
That was a, yeah, that's not just for twenty twenty-five. That's a contract. That was a twenty-year contract.
We didn't sign a contract for, we said twenty-five, you would not get longevity.
Did the.
The commissioner signed.
Into a contract.
Those commissioners signed the, uh, they signed the quarter or the commissioner.
That's an agreement, but that's not, that was for twenty-five only. I'm not. What I'm saying is that I don't know that twenty twenty-six we precluded that yet. And I don't know why.
The salary ordinance was. So, but I get what you're saying. If that's something that could change, I have no issue.
Well, and I, I think that we just said we're talking about people that didn't get raises bonuses and now we want to give people who did get raises bonuses.
Okay, let me ask you this. And where is, where is, just like JR said, where is their leader at then? Where is the person that's supposed to be standing? Why ain't they sitting here and doing the same thing? And I'm not gonna have, I'm working for my people and I, I'm not gonna punish my people.
And it's up to them. The only thing I said on the legal side is I do want to make sure because I just had this conversation with Wagner, Wagner.
Well, I feel a lot of that changed with the lawsuit. Because had I come over here and we asked for any more funds, you know, we wouldn't have got any because we was the, what was it?
Restricted to, we couldn't even use our discretionary fund because you said we were limited at four point.
Extra funds, wherever you want to go.
And you're telling me that you had that four point four million and now you're coming in saying you have money left over. So.
Right, exactly saying that, that was given to us by the judge and by an agreement, but we're willing to work a deal. We're wanting to work for the taxpayer. We're trying to do this to save the taxpayers money is what we're trying to do. It's fifteen thousand dollars for next year's raise. Now, how much is fifteen thousand? How's it gonna cost for us to send the deputy to the academy? It's a lot more than fifteen thousand.
I get all that. We're not talking about twenty twenty-six because that's a discussion.
Okay, okay.
We just said, we just talked about, we're gonna advertise for it across the board percentage raise for all employees and that's what we said, right? So in talking about twenty twenty-five is what you presented as a bonus was what seventy-eight thousand dollars? If, if we gave the bonuses to everything that they've submitted. So all I'm saying is from the legal perspective, I talked to Wagner Shilly about what you asked me to about giving those just subset of people. The question was, can we give the subset of people that didn't get raises and that be their criteria and that not be non-discriminatory since that was brought up by Mr. Turkington? I haven't asked them, hey, we gave these people raises and now we want to give them bonuses. Is that gonna be considered if we don't give it across the board? Uh, because I don't want to get into discrimination. See, just.
It wasn't that. It was just a way to give them something and we're still turning back in funds out of those lines that we would want to pull it from. So we're not even exhausting it. We're just.
And here's the point.
I think, let us look into the idea of the across the board. She's gonna advertise it. Let's see what we can do in twenty-six. Does that sound fair? Cause we've done twenty-five for you guys.
No, now, here you're saying that twenty-five, there is nobody in their right mind. A judge would not give something a twenty-year, a twenty-year job where when you get hired, it's a contract. When you're on for twenty years that you can look at year fifteen and see what you're making. A judge is not gonna just grant that.
They did. They signed the same paper we all signed saying we entered into that for twenty-five. I'm saying for twenty-six, Mr. Linsby has an excellent idea.
He does.
Let's try to do that. And at some point in twenty-six, we can amend this salary ordinance. We do it all the time. And in the meantime, in the meantime, though, my folks are sitting there, you know what I'm saying? Thinking that they're supposed to get this amount of money and they're not getting it. And this is again, a discussion for the last, for the next six hours. And they were getting a bonus tonight and they're not.
Right, when you even talked about it, when you sign on and you see, you can look out and see what you're gonna get.
I agree. And I think the whole county should have that, but I mean, that's, that's.
You know, but.
What I'm trying to say is, is they.
Can't make that happen tonight.
No, but this is different. This isn't that.
This is just money transfers.
You know.
Well, that's what I'm asking you. Are you asking for?
I would rather put them in there. Yes.
Well, let's get that done and that's.
Are you asking them to create a bonus line and transfer money from one line to another or would it?
Yes, that would be great. It came to two thousand for the full-time and one thousand for part-time.
On the red side.
On the red side. There's one on the day, jail side too.
And this is all monies and will still be encumbering a large amount of money.
Yeah, they'll still be a lot.
Hopefully barring any kind of catastrophe that could happen at the end of the year.
There can't be one out of our employee lines like that.
So what else do we need to do?
I got a question for, if the, would allow me here. I've been reading this lawsuit and trying to catch up about the judge. I have a question for the sheriff. Well, for the council too. And was the sheriff's side of the budget used instead of the lit special purpose tax to do the jail for the maintenance at the jail? I mean, do we steal money from the sheriff? Not per se, still, but did we use another line's budget instead of using the lit special purpose tax?
For maintenance?
Yeah, for maintenance at the jail.
Yes, because there was a budget with no maintenance in it submitted to that exhibit A or B.
But I think what he's asking, tell me if I'm right here, okay? I think what you're asking is why we have a lit special purpose tax, was they taking money out of the sheriff's budget, which is not part of the lit special purpose tax to pay? This facility that the tax is for.
Well, the good news.
It's only for the jail.
The good news, all the lit goes away in twenty-six and we get to redo every bit of that.
So that.
Start all over.
You wanna answer his question? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, it is. I don't, I can't sit here and tell you exactly how much came out of what fund without looking at their budget or their location budget. But I can tell you at the agreed order, we all sat down and we decided line by line where we would go and put money to be able to meet the agreement that the council, the commissioners and the sheriff entered into.
We would never agree, and I'm not arguing, we would never agree to take money from, uh, into a maintenance from the sheriff's side to pay for something that you've got a lit special purpose tax.
It didn't come from the roadside, if that's what you're asking. Uh, it either came from general, which can be used.
From the car line, the sheriff.
Came from the sheriff's car line. You took it from the monies that the, we agreed to.
And then the other part was the radios that you guys paid for. That was one radio.
I got one more question. Just.
If you're gonna talk about the litigation, let's do that in the executive.
Just on the litigation, maybe. The jail inspection. Why did they call a second one? Do you know?
I have no idea.
Okay, that's all I need to know.
Okay, can we go to jail now?
Sure.
No, no, I'm not going.
You're going to jail.
But since you did mention a jail, I do want to say this. Jennifer, do you want to tell them what the insurance company said about the county jail?
And we got an excellent email.
Yeah, we all got that.
Very much bragging about the, the jail, the highway department and the health department. And I think that will help in our insurance. They, they were very, very impressed with the jail, very much so. In fact, I will forward that email to you guys.
I think we got it.
Did you already get it?
I watched it, but yeah, but.
Congratulations. Onto jail.
Okay, I already sent the jail one. The one for the sheriff had been revised.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so you've already got the other one. Oh, okay. You already know about the longevity. Uh, the utilities will have sixty-one thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars and forty-nine cents left. Longevity already talked about overtime comp saves would be thirty-two, ninety-eight, twenty. Repairs and maintenance will be in the general, twelve thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars and thirty cents. Uh, the, um, office supplies for the jail will have after the claims thirteen oh five sixty-seven. Fuel will have six thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollars and eighty-three cents. Safety supplies will be a whole nine dollars and ninety-five cents.
That's from that one. You got the toss cure.
Um, but. We get to this one. I didn't know. We could split that, maybe get half the pizza.
Seven dollars.
Yeah, I hope she will sell it.
Yeah.
Institutional supplies. You're fine. Institutional supplies will have twelve thousand, four hundred and twenty-one dollars and ninety-five cents. That's in special purpose or public safety or no special purpose. Um, the medical and dental claims and then we will turn back in fifteen thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars and fourteen cents. On that one contractual will be five thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars. Inmate meals after the claims come out will be fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fourteen cents. Service contract will be twenty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars and fifty cents. Transport expenses will be ten thousand. Hospitalization will be thirteen thousand, six hundred dollars and sixty-eight cents. HIV, we just got a claim from Walgreens. So it will come back with twenty-two thousand, six hundred and forty-six dollars and eleven cents. The repair and building maintenance on that side will come back with four thousand, five hundred and seventy-three dollars and eighty-six cents. And uniforms will come back six thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars and eighty-two cents. And uniforms will come back, six thousand four hundred thirty seven dollars and eighty two cents, for a total of two hundred and fifty seven thousand four hundred and fifty eight dollars and sixty eight cents.
And that goes back into the lit special purpose.
Yes.
You still do the quarter master, don't you?
Yeah, we got our own.
That's not discouraged, that's what you, you put your stuff with and then pass.
Yeah, and that's diverse.
I already added it, so you don't have to.
No, I'm just seeing, I said it.
You have, you have what goes in, general, general lit, lit public, and then plus they have to get.
In general, for the jail is seventy eight thousand four hundred and sixty six dollars and ninety nine cents.
Yeah, thank you.
So, and then it's all added together for the last one, so. And that's with every claim being done, totally up to date, every one of them finished.
You care, Jennifer, make copies of that?
No, I don't.
Please, if you don't care.
Not a problem.
I mean, I just, I mean, just look.
And I have that on the back of it too.
Scan it and email it.
I can do that.
Then I'll work it out there.
Okay.
How's that?
On the back is the one with, it shows the, for the jail and the one for the sheriff.
That'll work, and then that way, I'll just send it all.
So, do we do the, do we do the thing for the, for the money for the payroll?
That's what I'm saying, if we could do that one right now.
For the longevity thing?
May I say?
You don't, you don't have to, if we're just gonna.
I'll go in there with her.
You don't have to say.
What, only she's approved on that?
Which one was you wanting to know?
The one for Doug's longevity.
Oh, it's already in the budget.
Well, but we don't have enough.
To cover every.
I'm gonna have to move some money.
Okay.
Um, if we took it out of overtime comp saved on the jail side, you got thirty two ninety eight there, can we move enough there?
I don't know anything about that one, so I don't know.
How much do you need? How much do we need?
Does he get fifteen or something like that?
I think I've got the ones right here.
I can't remember. Yeah, he would get the max, which is either twelve or.
Twelve is what he's been giving.
I think it's nice, isn't it?
Two thousand was in there, but.
Whatever it is. That's a joke, whatever it is, that's been twenty years.
Yeah, it is.
It just, it isn't a joke, it was probably a very good thing.
At the time.
Twenty years ago.
When they done it, it was probably a very good thing, I don't wanna say it's a joke, cause that's not fair to whoever said it, and these seeds back then.
Twenty years ago, it was probably.
It just has needed some address.
Twenty years ago, a lot of money.
Yeah. Yes. Twelve hundred dollars to put you in a heat air system anyway, twenty years ago. Little bit.
Like the guy sitting there talking about, you gotta know what jail phone is, you know what regime it is, I was like.
Never heard of that. Yeah, I've seen that.
How do you talk about a two point seven million dollar project for six months, and we never heard of it?
But we asked, or.
Well.
We're gonna spend sixty seven thousand or something.
We're gonna have twelve hundred in the line. We got twelve hundred.
Two million, seven hundred and thirty.
What do you need?
Maybe a salary.
Okay, you got twelve hundred?
Yes.
Or fourteen, we need fourteen for the.
I have to get two, yeah, I need enough there.
So, you need you. We had elected officials who can't change, they don't get it, right? Is any other elected?
They did before.
Yeah.
Because I.
I know my justice gotten it before.
I think they.
I get it, we're wrong.
Let me see if I can.
We got that, we got that.
Yeah, well, absolutely.
Is that what, what's our handle?
We're just gonna have to go buy the handles.
Yeah, I don't.
Go buy the rules of the handles.
I don't know what it is, how much you need to transfer?
Okay, what we need to do, we need to do two hundred dollars. Can we take two hundred from the overtime comp saved to the long term one?
And, I mean, that's fine, I don't worry much about those, so I don't, I've never messed with one.
That would be like murder.
Can you just, if you want to, and this is just trying to simplify things, if you wanna go ahead and take it, and then let Amy know where it came from, that way she can catch her looks up.
Yeah, okay.
And make it quicker.
These are easier, I mean, it's not a huge amount of money.
I'll go make the transfer on that. And then, um, we don't have a longevity line in the sheriff's department, so we will have to make.
Create a line?
Create a line.
We had one at one time, but that we've never.
What do you have that you're turning in over, how much you need, you need twelve hundred dollars? What do you have a line you're turning back twelve?
Well, they can, she can use full time, because the full time line.
Just pick one, that's all that matters, yeah, I'm just.
Six hundred will go to you, or six hundred will go to Toby.
Just make sure that they.
Most of them will forfeit your six hundred.
I'm going to, I'm donating to the shop of the sheriff.
There you go.
So, the, the longevity check that I will get with is gonna be donated to the shop sheriff.
There's overtime comp saved there to you of eighty four, you still got seventy six percent of that.
Okay, yeah, just do the twelve hundred.
I'll carry the line, okay, give me a second, I'll go make that.
Thank you.
No.
Oh, man. I don't ever want to see these papers again as long as I live.
Well, we'll catch you next year.
I have no idea how much time I spend on them.
Actually.
I do believe it's a nightmare I have.
Actually, I probably do. Eighteen parties, seventy four homes.
I would be very grateful to get rid of half of them.
When you get done over there, you just run for county.
No.
Come on.
No, there is not enough money in the world.
On another note, if anybody wants to know, Terry Jones texted me and said that the meeting for the sheriff's board is this Thursday at six o'clock at Buchanan Building. So, if anybody is interested in going to the regional sheriff's board meeting.
Absolutely, I mean.
Just wanted to let you know, let the public.
That thing's gonna stay on though, just so you all know, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna go the rest of the, I don't think we muted it, so.
You say anything bad about me, I wanna go back and watch it.
That's all right, I'll tell you, you know I tell you.
I'm honestly not.
I don't know.
Feel like a new person, man, I'm telling you, it's the best thing I ever did.
I go January second for consultation on surgery on my knee.
On your knee?
Yeah.
So, that's, I just seen a guy today, took his wife, was at the doctor's office, she'd had a knee replacement six months ago, and said she was just couldn't walk, terrible, just.
They said that Sam LaMaster died in a blood clot in the knee.
That's what happened to you?
Well, he just walked him, you saw him.
No kidding, I didn't know.
He just sat down and be getting ready to go.
Yeah, that was nice, I'm sure.
Yeah.
That thing's off. That thing's off, we better be careful.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. One thing I did wanna to, to talk about, and again, the total cost for the longevity for our matrix for next year is less than fifteen thousand dollars. And I'm just gonna be honest with you, if we don't get that, I'm gonna have to, we'll have to go back to court, you know what I'm saying? So, it's like, that fifteen thousand dollars is not dropping a buck, what it's gonna cost these attorneys, you know what I'm saying, like they're really funny.
Not bad.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I know we have people here, um, uniform line, I know it's separate, but I've, it's rumored that you, out of your own money, took and bought bulletproof vests, is that true?
No, we used it out of the different funds, we got different funds.
But the county's responsible for that by a state statute, if I'm correct?
Yeah, yes, they are.
Did you get any money back on that?
Well, as long as we can get it paid for, you see what I'm saying, as long, cause I'm trying to work together, see, that's the deal, man, I'm trying to work together, cause I'm trying to save the taxpayer money, that's what it's all about.
Let me just say this, I think whatever money you spent was taxpayer money, or county's money.
Uh.
But I think, I don't think it just came out of where we win and paid for.
Now, now, we may not appropriate your painting, but they've got the money, it usually comes to here.
Okay.
I don't, I don't want people to think we're not.
Right, I.
Living outside of our.
Yeah, well, I mean, we've purchased them out of commissary, we've purchased them out of our other home rule funds that we had before, so.
It's non taxpayer money.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's go.
But it's all county's money.
Right.
The people's money, everything.
Right.
Every dime, not you, anybody.
That's why we're here.
The county's money, yeah.
Yeah.
But the question bothered me a little bit, that was implying that we weren't.
But some of those were donations.
Well, I think I should say, here's something else too, you guys can tell me when it comes back. Is these discretionary funds, if the money was donated, I got a fund that's got twenty eight thousand dollars in.
Yeah.
And I'm not being able to use it, I'm gonna have to give this money back to the people, because if they're not, if we're not using it for what they gave to us as a donation for, then I'm not gonna set it to keep it, cause that's not what would be for. Most of it's came down from, came down from.
And I'm, I'm not bulling here, not wrong word, I'm asking questions, how come I wasn't used for that?
I tried, I'm asking, we tried to, and they, they, uh, wouldn't approve it, you guys wouldn't approve it.
For the K nine?
Yes. That's gonna be a question that you could ask.
Well, I'm just, I am, I don't know.
Well, I, I'm trying to get along with everybody, man, I'm just gonna get along, trying to treat everybody fair.
Any more?
And I know, you know what I'm saying? Is there something else too, we brought in over two hundred and some thousand dollars last year, while we've left six families to the county.
Hey, Heather, do we have to?
Yes, I don't.
I know that was in the general.
Yeah.
That we have been, but.
You should, you have a.
The reason I'm saying is, is the longer ones you send, I can't make the motion a second or two. It's just not.
I didn't send them, she does, that's not me.
Somebody did, I'm just saying we can't approve that minute.
Yeah.
Well, there is a minute, I know we need to have a period to put with the bomb and stuff, but I don't take the minutes, I don't really take.
Like I said, I can't.
I mean, we.
Yes, you can.
Now, we're.
Sometimes I act like I'm the secretary.
I try, but I try to do my job.
Colin, you can be two places at once, very kind, oh, thank you.
All right. Fifty something, fifty three, four?
Fifty three and fifty four.
All right, resolution twenty twenty five dash five three is a resolution to transfer appropriations within major budget classifications for Scott County Sheriff's Department to transfer twelve hundred dollars from the general fund overtime comp saved to general fund longevity for the purpose of paying the longevity that we talked about here tonight.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Miller, second by Cheatham, sorry, Collins. All in favor? Motion passes.
Jennifer, what are you doing?
What am I doing? Should we do the same thing?
Are these two different ones? They're going into different lines? Is that right? They're coming in the same funds, then?
Yeah, but it's different location.
Okay, that's a O five, that's a three.
One road, one's jail, I think.
Yeah, I'll have to just let.
Yeah, cause this one is the one for the jail side. So, resolution twenty twenty five dash five four.
They should be different amounts, I think.
Yeah, that's twelve hundred, which is two, two six hundred, him and Toby, six hundred each. The other one's two hundred to add to the current longevity for the, this one even says Scott County Sheriff's Department jail. So, from general fund overtime comp saved to general fund longevity, two hundred dollars, entertain a motion for that one.
I'm a layman.
Cheatham's got a motion for that, second by Linsby, all in favor?
You didn't specify.
Calm yourself over there.
Can you send that out to me?
All right. So, that should take care of all of those longevity checks, and they'll go out with payroll.
I think we can do them this Friday.
Okay.
I think they'll be able to do that, by doing it today, I think we can do it Friday.
Okay.
Cause I'm pretty sure she told me she has to create a payroll, so it would have to.
If you get it, if you get it Friday with what you're wanting to do.
We still need to set, do the.
Yes, we still have time.
Yeah, that's it, yeah, cause it.
I didn't know when you were doing.
Nineteen.
So, for the thirtieth, the thirtieth, you still, you still need eleven, you're still asking for eleven thousand retreats for, for full time deputy to overtime out of the eleven seventy.
Yes, and we can do that on the thirtieth.
Or if you need it now, we'll do it now.
I don't.
We have, we, the next payroll.
We're good for this payroll?
Payroll's twenty six.
Yes.
So, then we need to, you do it.
You need to do it now, that's what I was asking earlier.
Yeah.
Cause I want to know, just. I'm sorry, but, uh, you've got twenty eight thousand dollars in that fund, why can't we do the, let him spend it?
I guess all you're gonna do is tell me how can I spend it, that's what we've been sending them over, but.
I know you said, but we didn't approve it sometime earlier this year, so I don't want it to go to waste.
Yeah, I, I.
So, whatever we, I need to do, I'll do it.
Nothing, nothing to go to waste.
Well, he, he said it was gonna go back.
I'm gonna send it back to the people, cause it was donated, done.
What was it donated for, Sheriff?
K nine.
Okay.
We had one individual donate fifteen thousand dollars. I'm not gonna sit on fifteen thousand dollars in donated money when you.
You're not gonna need anything for K nine in twenty six?
We just paid the seven thousand dollars for the K nine vehicle to get done. But it's been done.
We've been submitting those, right, we've tried to submit it to the fund, and they were appropriated at zero.
If I remember correctly, when he asked for it, always, we didn't say we wouldn't appropriate it as a K nine, we wanted to know where we were gonna unappropriate out of the four point four million.
Either way, what we did in twenty five is.
Oh, okay.
In twenty six, can we appropriate it as K nine stuff you're gonna need?
Yeah, that's what, that's what we planned on doing, cause what we do is, we've always done it, is we've sent it over, you guys appropriated out of that fund, and we.
So, Amy, can you, can you fire me off a list of how you want that distributed within the K nine fund? Can you do that?
Cause we got those other ones too.
You're gonna have something in twenty six, right?
We're not just spending it, we're sending it over, you guys have.
The, the Donald funeral and all that, we just had to pay for that ourselves.
That's what it is, that's what it is.
And this.
If you want that, so we need to get that done, we need to know where.
I, I remember the reason I voted no to that.
Yes, sheriff's side, eleven seventy.
The claims that were turned in would have went to the vendors.
From eleven six oh three.
You had already paid them.
Eleven thousand dollars.
Commissary, I think.
Goes into.
Cause we would have approved them, she would have had to cut checks to those vendors again, and I didn't, so.
For overtime, yes.
We can.
Eleven thousand, yes.
Either send me a budget for them, or how you wanna disperse that in twenty six.
Keep that positive.
I did in the, in the budgets, we submitted that for, you know what I'm saying, for that.
Remember you told us to put it on the budget, and we.
What's it under, what's mine?
It's on its own.
You were, you were gonna do equipment.
With all equipment?
That's what you were gonna do, but all of those had zeros.
Okay.
So.
Do you want?
It needs to be on its own, because we, it's hard to distinguish, you see what I'm saying?
It's in its own fund, I know what it is, I remember that.
Yeah, it is.
Where'd you go now?
To make another.
You might go make another one.
One more, more payroll, more.
Here's how, and like I said, twenty twenty six, Jennifer, here, here's how we've always done it, we, it wasn't like we were spending money. Here's how, and like I said, twenty twenty-six, Jennifer, here, here's how we've always done it, we, it wasn't like we were spending money, we would write the check, or we wouldn't write the check, we would send it to you guys to appropriate the funds to come out of those discretionary or non-taxpayer funds, and that, how it would be done.
Where does it go to, like where you're wanting to spend it, is that what you're saying? So like, if you were gonna buy this bottle.
Right.
And you wanted to buy it out of K nine fund.
Mm-hmm.
You would send a request.
Right.
And then it's approved by here, and then.
But you, but you can't buy that through commissary and then do that because.
We have before, we have permission.
That's what the problem was.
That's what the problem was. Cause they already paid the bills.
They was trying to cut, they'd have to.
Then they would have to pay the vendor, so then your vendors would get double checked.
Well, it should've come to commissary.
Cause when he said that, I thought, man, I thought we figured this out, I brought it up before, cause some of the K nine officers were upset about it.
Well, it should've come back to commissary to reimburse the commissary.
Legal question, can we transfer at his request, that donated money into the commissary?
No, no.
That was the rule.
No, the K nine fund can't be used to buy that bottle unless it's directly.
Unless it's.
Well, for a dog or K nine.
And I think that's where the issue came up with the vest, is that you were trying to take it out of the line that I don't.
Well, that's how I was told.
So if you put everything out of K nine on your Form One budget for equipment, I don't think that's a good idea, because you can only spend that on certain things, so can you not break it down as to what you think?
Well, here's, here's what we had to break it down, is this, we put it on, we got the Form One.
Yeah.
And it's a K nine, and then home rule already says it can only be used for K nine purchases.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's already, yeah, and we was just sending the bill over, we would get the bill, send it over on the claim form to come out of that line, that budget line, that K nine fund line, and we got denied, that's what I'm trying to say.
Somewhere along the lines that.
Well, then you guys.
Got paid, and then once we got it, we seen it, I think the check would've, if we had approved it, the checks would've went back to, I forget all those vendors with that list.
To reimburse.
Well, I, what I'm trying to say is just rectify the problem, that's all you're gonna do, rectify the problem now.
How do you want me to do it, you want me to?
Oh, you gotta say this, is this, in twenty twenty-six, that the process to follow is, is we will send the bills over on the voucher out of those funds for what they're being used for.
But we couldn't go ahead and purchase said bottle, so what we would have to do is get, we would have to get, I wanna buy this, okay, send me an invoice for it, then it gets approved, then now send me my bottle.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
We could do an additional appropriation for.
And then we can work, then we can work.
We can do the additional preparation for what the request is out of the K nine fund, but you can't say, we already bought this out of commissary and I reimburse this, it has to be.
You can't do that.
Here's the dog food bill, please pay it out of the K nine fund.
Right, that's, that's what we were doing, that's what.
Well, we can't with dog food, we have to pay for it, let me order it.
So we could budget.
Yeah, we could buy five bags at a time.
And say, there's a line in the K nine fund to buy dog food, put a thousand dollars.
This stuff's extinguished.
Food's a hundred bucks a tank now, but, I mean, you could put, if there's twenty thousand, you could put five thousand dollars worth of dog, what do you need?
She says it's battery.
Here. Somebody stole it.
Yeah, that's.
I'll get on to that.
That, we just need to get that rectified, and when we purchased it, we was using the leasehold funds and everything else, it was, we were sending it out.
So we're gonna have to work together, clean it up, but I think we can.
Now, let's.
I think in January, we can go in there, we can go into that K nine fund, we can make a line, we could do dog food. Some whatever number you all come up with, put in it, and then every time you need to buy dog food, you can submit that claim to her and say, pay it out of this fund, out of this line, and it'll be taken out of there. The rest of it, I don't know, I don't know how to get your money back, that we paid out of commissaries, I'm not legally allowed to put that money back into commissary.
Well, tha- and that's, we understand that, that, that's not an issue, I'm just saying rectify the problem now.
Yeah.
You see what I'm saying? Cause I'm just gonna be, there's a lot of distrust, there's a lot of bad blood, you know what I'm saying, between everybody, let's just get it over, I mean, we need to be working together.
I agree, I want to just make you know that twenty-six. Fifty thousand percent, I'm on board with that, so, it's got also good, dog food, send me a number, you wanna put it in there, and we'll transfer that into that line, and that'll at least take care of that. Then whatever comes up, Amy.
That's what we're gonna do.
That's what I'm saying.
That's what I'm saying, I, because you've, you've got the ordinance already that says what it has to be used for.
Right.
So I'm like, well, you need to create another line just for dog food, cause line, the ordinance.
I think that fund doesn't say anything, it just the money sits in that fund, and it would be like any other fund, you would have to have what you're gonna spend it within, cause she needs a location, so like, this is. Ten seventy, which isn't right, it's eleven seventy, but then the location all the way down, that's how they track the money.
That's how it's gonna sound.
And, so I think we can do that. Like the dog food number, to where you could buy out of that fund.
He just used dog food, for example.
I just asked Amy and Jennifer to get better.
Like he puts that much in there, then she needs six thousand dollars of dog food, it's gonna be in there.
And then we can get it.
Because then if something comes up, and like, I need about bottles, get an invoice, send it over here, we'll approve it, then you get ordered a bottle, but we can't order it in.
Well, we don't even need to approve it.
John, are you in or out on this one? Give me two seconds, I'm gonna read it real fast, resolution twenty twenty-five dash five-five, we're transferring between eleven thousand dollars from the deputies line to the overtime, they were short deputies, they needed overtime, we gotta make payroll, who's in?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Lizzy B.
Second.
Second by Collins, all in favor, Lizzy B's in, seven oh, all right.
Thank you, I couldn't find that. He makes me.
That's done. What else you got? We're gonna fix the K nine thing, early January.
That was it, making notes for the K nine, and then, uh, like I said, all those other non-taxpayer funds, I don't know, you got home rule funds, however you wanna call it. We've been doing it forever, we send it over, you know what I'm saying, you guys proved it out of that line item that it came out of, and it was, there was never an issue, so it's, you get back to. Cause it's not like we're spending money and then.
Appropriated, I think what happened, when you sent over the budget Form One, say, we're all just zeroed out of equipment, I don't, I think you gotta, you can't just put everything in equipment.
No, no, we put more on the Form Ones, we put like each fund, each discretionary fund, we listed the amount of money that we needed out of each fund, we, we wanted you all to appropriate each fund.
We got a whole amount, all.
Yeah.
Out of, got.
Well, that's what.
She's saying the whole amount is all listed as the equipment, I think, um, I don't know, let's work through, but I think if you have, and I'm using the whole number, if we did the four point four million, it's gonna go back to the same scenario, if we take a hundred thousand dollars out of these other funds, the four point four then has to change, we gotta give something up here, cause if we're gonna stay within a budget, it doesn't mean four point four plus X amount of dollars in these other funds.
We'd always done that.
Created, yeah.
You see what I'm saying?
It's just like above and beyond, because we.
That is my most taken.
Fees.
I hate it, we've all done it. Well, that's, that's something I think we gotta work together, figure out how we're gonna change it.
And we have no issues, is that?
Well, I think that if you could come up with lines that work, rather than zeroing out all those little stupid lines, come out with lines that actually work, because I don't want you to be in a situation like you were with the best, where your money's there, but you can't take it out of that line, so if you come up with Jennifer. Yeah, with lines in each of those home rule funds, then you can budget them sort of where you need them in those lines, I think that would be.
Let me ask you, is it, would it be easier just to go back and redo the whole, and I'm asking this, I don't know if you do this, Jennifer may know, it would not be easier to go in and say like, okay, sheriff's office, you've got four point four million dollars. This much of it has to be used for operational use, especially equipment, this much of it has to be used for, um, put sowers for pay, and as long as each, it's an only, that's, you know, that's the federal government, that's, you know.
Yes, they're, yeah, we gotta go about a lot, I got these other forms.
Each one of them.
DLF gets us, yeah, and most years.
You remember point this? There's two B forms.
But the home rule fund.
That, that's the bond, right?